Welcome back. Before we start the meeting, I would like to ask that you join me in a minute's silence to remember the honorary councilor David White, who sadly passed away on Wednesday 3rd of May. I would like to welcome David's children, Michael White and his sister Zana Zalova, who are here in the chamber. Councilor White served as a senior local government city councilor in Castlewood for six years, from 1998 to 2004. He served as mayor of the city in 2003, 2004. He was also a county councilor between 2004 and 2009. We now observe a minute's silence, please. Thank you. I would like to ask members to declare now any interests in the agenda before it is out of control. Members are reminded that they can declare any interest at any time during the meeting if it occurs to them in advance. Finally, I would like us members to be concise with our contributions and show respect to their opponents. Are there any nominations that exist? We have taken to item 9 of the agenda to the recommendation of the A.C.D. councilor Smith's eleven spaces, which can be found on page 9 of the agenda. Councilor Smith, will you wish to give the idea?
Yes, very briefly. It is my great pleasure to recommend these three nominations or acceptance by council. For clarity, as a result of the cancellation of the last council meeting, these three appointees attended the previous Conservative meeting as candidates elected and completed the appropriate paperwork. However, the decision has to whether to confirm their nomination made clearly with the council today.
Is there any advance? We'll now go to the vote. Please, can I see those in favour of the recommendation? Thank you. Now, item 10, the panel committee 1, march 2017 from the findings of the local government participant, who starts the meeting on the agenda. This item is for council to note. Is there any advance? Councilor Pippen, you have the right to imply your measure of interest to your chair.
I would just say, Mr Mayor, that I feel that the debate has been adequately done, because I'm sure the council will learn the appropriate lessons. I would like, however, to stress that our officers work with great diligence and earnestness in the discharge of their duties as planning officers. And if occasionally an oversight of this crime occurs, I think it's understandable. And as long as, as I say, the lessons are learned, then I think there is no serious cause for regret or alarm.
Thank you, Councilor Pippen. For the record, this item has been noted. Okay, so we have...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to endorse what Councilor Pippen has said. This incident, with my board, believes that the council offices acted extremely professionally, and I have full confidence in the... Just like that, but actually, that council can see.
Thank you, Councilor Pippen. Item 10B, appointment of committees for 2017-2018. Does the council contend for a true appointment of committees as set out on pages 40 to 44, and there's a date in the information packet page 27? Is there any advance? We now go to the council appointment of chairs, the vice-chairs, for 2017-2018. The nominations are included on page to define your agenda pack. Is there any advance? Does the council approve the nominations? Yes, thank you. And the next item is the territory appointment of council's independent person and deputy, which can be found on page to be served on the agenda packs. Does the council approve the continuation of appointment of this decision ready as the council's independent person, Mr Robert Bennett, as the council's deputy in the council? Person for the municipal year 2017-2018? Yes, agreed? Please turn to the constitutional amendments, which can be found on pages 49 to 51 on your agenda packs. Does the council agree to the changes and amendments to the constitutional show on your agenda packs? Is there any advance? Please, okay. I will now go to the vote. Please, can I see those in favour of the recommendation? Yeah?
Twenty. Okay, so twenty, okay.
Those against? We now need to hold a special meetings of political to deal with annual appointments. Members of the following committees have been issued with special meeting agendas, which can be found in the information packs: civil affairs, community services, environment, licenses, budget resources. Those who have been appointed members of the committee are allowed to vote. When a committee is due to disappointments, would only the members of the committee please stand and raise their hands or raise their hand in order to make the vote clear? Would the executive councils have been asked to agree upon this, also stand when requested? I will bring out the members of each committee, and I would ask them all to make members on this time to vote if a member of the committee is absent. Civil Affairs Committee, Information Pack, page 27. Would the former councillors please, on the right of your hand, stand? Councillor McPherson. Councillor Dan Stedt. Councillor Gotham. Councillor Robertson. Councillor O'Connell. Councillor Holt. Alternate members are Councillor Ratcliffe and Tim Moore. And I ask that you all take part in vote if a member of the committee is absent. Two members have cleared their appointments set out on the agenda? Yes? That concludes the Civil Affairs Committee. Now, to the community services, excluding committee, Information Pack, page 49 to 43. Would the former councillors please stand or raise their hands? Councillor Ratcliffe. Councillor Sinott. Councillor Appleton. Councillor Barretts. Councillor, Councillor Kidestig. Councillor Rostig. And O'Connell. Alternate members are Councillors Gotham, Sergeant and Singer. I ask that you all take part in vote if a member of the committee is absent. Could executive councilor for Spinselotten spaces, Councillor Smith, and the executive council of communities, Councillor Johnson, also please stand or raise their hands? Does the school in committee agree and know the appointments set out on the agenda? Yes? Do the executive councillors, Smith and Johnson, agree their appointments set out on the agenda? Yes. That concludes the community services school in committee. Thank you. And finally, excluding committee, Information Pack, pages 45 to 46. Would the former councillors please stand? Councillors Gotham, Bird, Ratcliffe, Sergeant, Shield, Big, Tunicleth. Alternate members are Councillors Appleton, Sinott and Lattie. I ask that you all take part in vote if a member of the committee is absent. Executive councillors, where developmental services and citizenry councilor, Rosemore, and executive councillor for planning policy and transport, Councillor Blenko, please stand or raise your hand? Do the committee agree and know the appointments set out on the agenda? Do the executive councillors, Blenko and Rosemore, agree their appointments set out on the agenda? Yes. Thank you. That concludes the empowerment of committee. Licensing committee, Information Pack, page 47. Councillors Bird, Ratcliffe, Appleton, Dan Stedt, Gotham, McPherson, Sinott, Smart, Hearing, Paddy, Tim Moore and Pippas. Alternate members are Councillors Rosemore and Holt. I ask that you all take part in vote if a member of the committee is absent. I remind all members of the licensing committee that training on the council licensing function is scheduled on Monday to June. You cannot act in licensing unless you have been with this training course. Do members have cleared their appointment of the set committees set out on the agenda? Yes? That concludes the licensing committee meeting. Strangish resources, Schooling Committee, page 54 to 55, Information Pack. Would the former councillors have raised their hands? Councillor Barretts, Pageant, Service, Sinott, Big and Country. Multiple members are Councillors Appleton, Sergeant and Mayberry. I ask that you all take part in vote if a member of the committee is absent. Could the executive councillor, Purpitz, and the executive councillor for finance, Councillor Robertson, please stand? Does the school in committee agree and know the appointments set out on the agenda? Do executive councillors, Herbert and Robertson, have cleared their appointments set out on the agenda? Yes. Yes, thank you. That concludes the Strangish Resources Schooling Committee. We now turn to the rest of the business. Could send the annual statements? Are the council proceed to roll? Three, two, one. First, four, one, four. I call on Councillor Herbert to speak for no more than fifteen minutes on the Labour Group's priorities for action and objectives for the whole government this year. The Labour Group's annual statement is included on pages 50 to 59 of your agenda packs, with an introduction from the leader on page 57 of your Information Pack. Following this, I will call our passenger group for the build-up of a group, Councillor Pippen, for their independent group. Councillor Herbert, yeah?
Thank you, Councilor Pippen. Can I join the others who I've brought you later to on your ticket office as our mayor? Clearly, as the first citizen of the city, we want to work with you, and we, as councillor and others have said, we share the same agenda in terms of representing the city as a city of many communities, with all of those communities having the same rights and clearly many same interests in terms of some of the national agenda around, and have to champion the best interests of Cambridge, including all of the non-U.K. citizens in our great city. And just, I just want to make use of this fifteen minutes in basically in a couple ways. I want to also briefly cover the papers, Mr Mayor, to executive portfolios. And just to preface also with a couple of conclusions. The councillors will have received yesterday a very thoughtful email from the commander of police for Cambridge, which gave us a very clear understanding of exactly how these things is. And we will, of course, along with linking up with the group leaders, the other two group leaders, and ensuring that councillors are informed, be working with the police as a council and taking appropriate actions ourselves, including the need to consider particularly events that have got a large public attendance or locations that have. So I think we're very fortunate to have the police leadership that we have, both here and across the constabulary. And we clearly have a deeply upsetting event in Manchester, including for someone like me who is a parent to two teenagers. And we have a considerable level of concern. And I think one of the opportunities I would hope the council takes is just to be a bit more thoughtful about some of these events and how we might prepare, because we hope that nothing happens in this sequence. But I do think this is a wake-up call in terms of some of the things we need to think about as a council. I also, you rightly pay tribute to councillor David White, and I add my sympathies, and I've expressed that along with others, to his family. He was both a councillor, the city councillor. And I'd just like to add, by way of contribution, I'd like to thank councillor Martin Ballack for his contributions to the city. He died recently. And I also hear the sad news that Lily Barrett-Patton, the wife of Eric Barrett-Patton, one of the two councillors from the Conservative Party, in my time on the councillors, has sadly died. So I'll just make those points. My other preface is there is two items of Arata. I thank the ever vigilant Phil Rogers. If I go into a slightly more humorous note, I watch or I listen to, sorry I haven't a clue on Radio 4, and there's Mrs Trellis from North Wales, who occasionally provides really useful input, and Phil Rogers regularly provides useful input, occasionally corrections. And there was a duplication in seven, ten and eleven paragraphs look worded very, looks slightly worded differently, but they say the same thing. So we'll delete paragraph 10, and we would just like to thank Mr Phil Rogers from our brief for his communication. And similarly, if people look at page 58 of the introduction, there was also a point that there's a sort of backwards in time date at the bottom there, and 2010 should in fact be 2020 rather than, no, that in time. So in terms of the annual statements, I think as the chaplain to Garry, councillor Benstead said, we are here as a city to serve all, but in particular to help those who need our help the most. And that is definitely a theme of the work that the Labour Council has done and will do. So if you look at the introduction on page 57, I'll just mention a number of things in passing, and a couple of them will come up later, in that we have a councillor debate, and also councillor O'Connell has questions to me on one issue as well, and there are other issues being raised, and councillor Pantry has a question. So I intend to use the opportunity of devolution to raise the disadvantage agenda, including in a number of ways, both in planning, but also in enabling us to focus on trying to understand this intergenerational disadvantage in communities like Abbey or other parts of the city, but also in places like Wiss Beach and Peterborough and elsewhere. Clearly, we have put a large amount of effort into our justice property work, and we'll obviously review that and improve on that. Contrary to some fears, and I've seen the comments in the opposition leader's statement, the aim of the community centres and community development reviews, and I'm sure councillor Richard Johnson will add to this, is to actually secure those centres, to improve some of the facilities, and to link in again, Mr Mayor, with some of the opportunities, as you know, of the faith-based facilities around the city, to actually come up with a far better arrangement. So we're certainly going to report on that on the 29th of June, and we're committed to continued significant improvements in the community sector provision. I will leave my colleague, the well-coloured executor councillor of housing, to later tackle some of those issues. And I know that the opposition annual statement says absolutely nothing about new housing, but that's quite critical, new housing for rates in the city. And similarly, we do value the dialogue with all councillors about the issues of homelessness and of rough sleeping, and I think there are room, there is room for us to do more on rough sleeping in the city. We are forever trying to match the creation of a problem, which is at its roots in government policy, both from coalition governments in welfare support damage, but clearly in the stories and tales of people coming to this city from other places is the result of the fact that they cannot actually get the support, they cannot actually get the welfare that they're entitled to. So we will be undertaking further work on that, and the executive councillor for housing, as is evidenced in the changes that I've made, of a relatively minor nature in the executive council portfolios, will be focusing on that. If we look at a safer and more inclusive city, we are with the efforts of councillor Smith, but clearly councillor Bird, we're taking a report to committee on the 29th of June on accessibility and aid boards. And it may not have been noticed that it happened during the election and we didn't make a lot of it, but between 10 and 2, we've upped the lighting levels by thirds, sorry, by a third, to ensure that we have brighter lights running until 2 o'clock. We will monitor that, we want people to feel safer in this city, we will monitor how that works and see whether that's correct. It's a relatively modest investment, but it's our commitment to keeping the streetlights burning bright. As it was, it's the only district that kept those lights burning bright at the time when the counterparts decided to switch them off. We are looking, obviously, there's issues in terms of delivering on the city deal, we're working with the incoming mayor, and we're also committed to consultations starting on control parking zones, on transport, on the quality of life. My new colleague and our welcome councillor, Rosie Moore, is the new executive councillor for Environmental Services in the city centre. There'll be a focus on the market square, on working with the Bid, on their plans, on a number of projects in the city centre. I haven't got time to speak to Ella, but we thank Peter Roberts for his contribution. And I think the council does owe a debt of gratitude to the work that Peter Roberts has done. He doesn't want to be called Mr Bid, and that's fair enough. But his contribution in so many ways has tackled a whole range of environmental problems and nuisances, has increased enforcement, and has just really made the interventions to clean our streets and particularly also our parks central, and made a real difference. So thank you, Peter. On transforming the council, you're seeing the changes to the portfolios in a way I've redefined the role for my colleague councillor Robertson more than most, in that there's a section now on digital strategy, there's a greater role to ensure that the performance of shared services meets their financial and business plan performance. We still leave responsibility, along with the input from committees, to the individual councillors that are the operational heads of particular services, but we do want to make sure that that works. I could spend ten minutes, Mr Mayor, about the shared way service and bin collections. I'm sure we'll come on to that later on. But I do report that that has been a broadly successful change, and that whilst the Liberal Democrats have certainly been making a lot of fuss, there are counterparts in South Cambridgeshire who have had similar issues, but nothing remarkably different, have not made that fuss, and there hasn't been the same sort of, in a way, faux anger about the being chaos, as they call it, because there simply isn't, there isn't evidence of bin chaos.
How's that completed?
In terms of, you can speak later, councillor O'Connell. In terms of the, and in trumpeting to clearly, there had to be reorganisation, because there's a huge number of new streets, and there wasn't at that stage allocated grounds to look after them. We continue, Mr Mayor, to be an outward-looking council, not least on climate change. We continue to plant plenty of trees, unlike the snide and smearing way that that issue is addressed in the opposition's annual statement in front of us today. And we're committed to tackling city centre air quality. So there's a whole host of issues covered by this annual statement: inequality, council house building, building on the council's strengths rather than nitpicking and criticising, transforming council efficiency, open spaces, climate change and air quality, that don't even get a mention in the opposition's annual statement. In fact, it's two years since there was a proper annual statement from the opposition. This is just a little color, little fix on the edges, which is, which we will listen to, and obviously we do respond to, including in committees. And there are often opportunities to improve. But we put before you a record of significant achievement, of determination and energy. We have noted at the end on page 58 that we will come forward with new plans to reinvigorate some of our initiatives through the autumn period. But this is a record which pays in huge tribute to our councillor staff, those that come and endure the council meetings and who provide exceptional leadership at director level, and I pay tribute to David Edwards, because he may not be with us for the next council meeting, and he's made an exceptional contribution as an interim director of resources. We have big challenges, but we do have the resources in this city, and we have the ability to make a real difference, as evidenced in some of our reports and in evidence in the annual statement in front of you. We are proud of the contribution that we've made so far, there is a huge lot more to do.
Councillor Herbert, we now ask councilor Pippen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In terms of the belief, and accumulated belief over the past year, that the group in control of this council is increasingly starting to believe in its own corporate attitudes. It's simply not the same world that ordinary citizens of this city live in. We assume an assumption that ordinary people, in order to park their car in their car park, need to be expected to carry a mobile phone, which even in this modern age is frankly not the reality that most people live in, a policy that has now been welcomely reversed. We've also found that, expectation on the other side of the chamber, that it's perfectly okay, and we've heard it again from councillor Herbert, for people who don't have their bins collected, to find the time somehow in their busy lives, where they have grown dependent, and rightly so, on the basic services of this council, to find the time to wait on the line, to tell officers that are difficult to find, are delicate to get to respond, that their bins have not been collected. That's the world that ordinary people have been living in over the past three months. And we've also seen over the past year, a belief on the other side that road closures are some credible and serious solution to the city's congestion problems. Another proposal from the other side that has had to be withdrawn. Mr Mayor, the policies coming from the controlling group don't show very much signs of working. We've seen rough sleeping numbers steadily rise. We've seen rough sleeping numbers steadily rise, we see the manifestation of that on the streets increase, it's something that every citizen of this city notices, has a conscience about and cannot understand why amongst all of the activity that the council says that it has in play, the situation just doesn't seem to get any better. We've seen another priority for the council, to control the activities of nuisance pumped huts completely faked, such that pumped huts creating a nuisance have found it just as easy after the measures introduced last year to operate with impunity as they did before. And about the transport, we've seen no practical plans coming down, coming down the track to transform public transport so that we have a cheap, accessible mainstream option, a truly transformed, proud public transport network. We've seen no evidence that that is something that is even in preparation. Secondly, Mr Mayor, we don't feel that the cases that we made out in the budgets earlier this year have been properly answered. We heard and saw foot shuffling, ambiguity or alternatively simply silence, except I grant you on the subject of tree planting, when even members of the opposition found it impossible to continue with the absurdity of claiming that they could even keep pace with the loss of trees that had to be removed or died in the city, and we're pleased at least that that has been put right. But this is notice that we don't intend to let these things go. We will call in on your promise to support refugees, we haven't forgotten what was said in the budget meeting, we will be looking for your long-term planning and involvement on the market square, which you didn't choose to vote for, but somehow believe is going to happen mysteriously from nowhere during this year, we'll be waiting for that too. And we're on the edge of our seats to know if you're going to keep the promise we expected from you to create an online resource for people to find community centres and facilities that have been provided, many of them with public money, either our own or section 106 funded. In addition, Mr Mayor, we're going to keep pressing you in relation to your commercial property priority over providing extra housing. Extra housing, members of the opposition seem to believe is only for someone else to fund, not for the council with its own money to make an impression of. And we notice that your priority for commercial property, where there's no shortage of investors up and down the country or around this city, you want to be one of those two, you don't put the priority on the social return that could come from things which both deliver financially and socially for the residents of this city. And we intend to keep up our pressure on you on the rough sleeping crisis. We don't think that there is some new thinking going on, and we would like to see some evidence of that, and we would like to see some evidence of receptivity to members in all parts of this chamber to contribute to that process. We want, we're going to continue to argue for a strengthening of the planning enforcement function as the city grows. We're going to argue that there needs to be better monitoring and supervision of events on public open spaces to protect the fabric and to protect the safety of the public. We're going to ask for you to start funding the tree strategy that this council has to increase the canopy cover, to increase the canopy cover within this city, so vital in this age of climate change. All you've done so far is to stop the erosion of that canopy cover by failing, as it were, to replace trees that die. We're looking for now for the investment on increasing the canopy cover, which we don't see several years after the strategy that that should be the case was adopted. And we want to see you recognise the priority of encouraging democratic involvement for the people for whom it's most pertinent, those about to vote for the first time, the older teenagers, who apparently are so absorbed and so obsessed with their exams that they simply don't have a life of any other kind. And it's that categorisation of young people that I'm afraid is a signal of people's view of young people being wrong, these are whole people willing and anxious to contribute to the democratic society. And we want to see you take some, to expend some energy to bring home an awareness to the city as a whole of the dividends of the growth of this city. We see the stresses and we hear of them all the time in the criticisms, yes, those too, but the equation is only complete when we draw to people's attention the benefits that come from the growth of this city. The new country parks and the huge reservoir of public art, both of these things are there, they're being increased all the time, and we should, we as a council have a role in drawing people's attention, drawing them into these facilities, providing them access and awareness, and so far, one of the subjects that we heard nothing from in the budget process earlier this year. And in relation to some of the major other items coming out on the council, when we see the product of the review of the housing revenue account, upon your defeat of our proposals to increase the support provided to our vulnerable tenants, the tenants who are going, we are told, to constitute an ever-growing proportion of our total tenant base, we're going to see whether you have managed to achieve a substantial difference in support to those tenants out of them reducing HRA. We were told our proposals in that respect weren't required, it was all going to be taken care of, and we'll be waiting to see whether that's the case. And we will be looking to make sure that in the mysteries of the reviews and the moving around of the monies and the facilities in the community centres in the city, we're going to be looking out for evidence for backdoor cutbacks. Many communities fear that, and I think it's our role as an opposition to police that from our side of this council. And on the question of evidence, we think you've put out an incredibly weak proposal into consultation, proposing, it seems, for the first time, incredibly to legitimise the maintenance of commercial property on the thoroughfare. You may argue reducing, but it's never been authorised before, and we think that you've started off how you conceded the case in advance, there is no civic or civil right for commercial businesses to operate on our pavements and our thoroughfares, and in your proposal, you've granted for the first time. And we want to secure accountability for the leader and for the executive councillors opposite to submit themselves to the overview of this, for the rest of this council, for the fact that due to the way that partnership organisations and powers migrate, many decisions affecting the city are now determined without our involvement, without individual councillors here having a chance to discuss and debate and recommend. We want to see a system arrive that for this council where we reconfigure our efforts for scrutiny so that we do hold accountable those on the other side of this chamber who go and make decisions affecting the city, and as of now, very little place where they answer for what they do. Now, Mr Mayor, we were perplexed to see two annual statements coming from the controlling group. The cynical of us felt that the first one looked a bit like last year's, and so that couldn't stand, but was a one that's actually in our papers and looks like a piece of corporate thing. And then the second, the cynical of us saying, once you had a chance for a shift in your hours, the one that councillor Herbert now speaks to, and aggressive, of course, some of the things that we're now raising. Mr Mayor, we're perfectly happy that the group opposite listened to the opposition. If that's what it's about, then that's fine. But at this point, we don't think the group opposite is listening nearly hard enough.
Mr Mayor, I think as an independent, I am in a fortunate position, because first of all, we're not proposing a set of policies comparable in their details to those which have been proposed by the Labour group, I don't think that applies to what has happened for the Liberal Democrats since detail has been seen as only lacking from their statement. So I'm going to conclude my remarks by making comments on those two statements. But before I do that, can I first of all welcome Patrick Shield? Patrick has been an opponent in Castle on one of two occasions, and I'm glad that he didn't succeed via that route, but I'm very, very happy to see him here. I also want to add to the tribute paid to Peter Roberts, who I think we can now regard as a has-been. Let him then become more serious and talk about Labour's plans. There is so much in the Labour statement to give us hope for this city. The support which is promised and which I can see being delivered for the local plan as it goes through its difficult inquiry, subject to the predatory aggressive instincts of the development lobby in this city. The obvious care and concern that the lead group has to ensure that the revision of the role of community centres in the city will release opportunities for even more housing, so I think the charge that the Castle is not taking the initiative to build a few homes is an inadequate and unworthy one. The fact that in this connection, that there is every prospect that in the foreseeable future we shall start to see plans for the development of Park Street, which will be a commercial centre, it will also be a place for a lot of additional housing and a continuing provision of car park space. The wonderful opportunities afforded by the development of the Mill Road depot and the way in which it is countenance that there should be there a mixture of market housing with more than the minimal requirement of affordable homes, all of these are extremely positive. So too is the attraction to the city of the funding that came with the combined authority, and it has to be put on the record, as it has been in the past, but it needs to be restated, that had it not been for Labour's obstinacy in refusing to sign up to the to the combined authority deal before there was some considerable concession on affordable housing in the city, that would not have happened. So, you know, congratulations where congratulations are due, and Kevin Price and the leader of the Labour group have a great deal to be proud of in that respect. However, I still think there is, there are tasks that need more careful attention. I notice, for example, that the Labour group promises that we will be delivering sustainable prosperity tourism. Well, I think there needs to be a fundamental change in the view that this council takes of truth. I noticed this morning, the mayors and rats, with respect to the development of this city commercial, yes, of course, that's a very important role for the city council, but mass tourism on the scale that we're witnessing in this city threatens to become a scourge rather than a benefit. Most of the people whom I talk to on a daily basis, you might say, you recognise my peer group as being perhaps of the more elderly quarter of the city, but let me say that an awful lot of people have given up on the city centre and going into the city centre, they find it so unconvenient. And with five and a half million tourists a year, the number rising, that we go to the trouble of welcoming and finding facilities available such as parking on Greens Road is a monstrously stupid idea. What we've got to be putting our minds to is how can we reduce daily visits to this city and increase long-stayed tourism and do it seriously? Because our present policy will lead to Cambridge becoming a kind of Disney Wonderland within the next decade. So I feel that that is a real challenge, and I know that an awful lot of people think that I'm speaking out of turn here, but I do regard this as a real threat to the city. I see also that the Labour group promises to make Cambridge safer. I have to add my voice to that which is expressed by the leader of the Lib Dem group here with respect to pumped huts. It is an incredibly difficult thing to control, in a sense, in microcosm. The growth of pumped huts is the equivalent of the way in which unhindered market forces have come to dominate the city. Here is a local authority with very, very limited powers facing against an aggressive and devious minority of speculators, yes, that's what they are, who will feed off the city, who do not care that many of the citizens of the city are offended and inconvenienced by their constant interventions. And I don't see that we've made any progress on that at all, and I believe that the pumped huts are laughing at the city council, they're deriding the city council because of their ineffectiveness. Now, it's easy to say that, if you were to ask me, and what is the solution? I don't know. But the Labour group is running the city council and they've really got to put their minds to that, people want to see progress on this issue. I also think that we take too easily the compliment that this is a beautiful city and the city centre is of the beauty, the most beautiful. Many parts of the city centre have the appearance of a third world city. Many parts of the city have bins constantly, permanently surrounding the area, litter, chewing gum stains on the pavements, falling slat, collapsing slats in the footpath. Honestly, you know as well as I do, and particularly sitting outside the Guildhall on an ordinary weekday when you see the state of the benches that we are offering to the general public, but someone's got to get a grip on making the city centre really attractive again. And I think at the moment, we're not failing, we're failing very sadly in that respect. Now, a few moments if I may, and only a few moments, but that's all it deserves, the Liberal Democrat statement, which is not so much a statement of a vision for what they would do in government, it's a vision from a group that sees itself permanently in opposition. It's a spiteful document. There isn't anything in it at all which is positive or which suggests that these people are ready to take over. And in the same way that I welcome the leadership of councillor Lewis Herbert, and hope he will long remain in that position, I also welcome councillor Bates' leadership of the opposition opposition group and how he will stay in that position for many years to come. So, one thing that the Lib Dem group have said, which, you know, I don't think it's hard to disagree with, is that they're going to restore the public highway to the public, de-cluttering pavements by improve street furniture. Again, how long ago was it councillor Gerry Bird took a ride through the streets of Cambridge in her wheelchair and made it abundantly clear that these A boards, particularly with respect to the disabled, were a huge inconvenience and obstacle? But they're still there. So we've really got to grip on that one as well. I think the Liberal Democrats have invented a new language. It's called gibberish, or dribble, or quibble, you call it what you like, but their statement really is shamefully that, and I commend and shall vote for the Labour's statement, because I think he is a hopeful vision for the city.
The annual annual of the Labour Group will be treated as a motion to an option, which will be taken, moved and settled. The main statement will be followed by a broad motion. Whereby members, as speakers, we have up to three minutes. Is there a penalty rate? Castle Johnson.
Mr Mayor, can I just congratulate you on your elevation? Like everybody else, I think you have a successful year and wish you, well, in your position. I want to use this opportunity to set out to cancel more detail about the positive aspiration we have in the forthcoming fiscal year to build on the achievements of business services within my portfolio and making Cambridge a better city for all. Our positive agenda, which in direct contrast to the disability complaint, the unstructured disability complaints from the other side. Our anti-poverty strategy established after we came into office sets out a mission to improve the standard of living and the daily lives of those in our city who experience poverty and also deal with issues that can lead households and low incomes to experience financial pressures and hardship. We certainly share the purpose of them to support the objectives of the strategy. A total of 1.3 million has been allocated to date for 23 projects for holiday lectures for families and financial advice, benefiting thousands. However, despite the real positive impact and tangible difference made to the lives of these thousands I talk of, challenges remain tackling inequality in our city due to the income to social security benefits and public services, the continued lack of affordable housing, and the difficulty for people who work to progress to better paid employment as the city labour market remains dominated by higher skilled occupations. This summer, we will propose to community services to review the revised anti-poverty strategy, which will underpin our future approach to addressing inequality by firstly, balancing initiatives which have an immediate impact on residents' living and poverty activities, which will improve the life chances of residents in poverty in the longer term. Second, continuing to balance interventions which focus on targeted budgets for citywide initiatives. Third, ensuring the council's community services and facilities are focused on meeting community needs in the areas that need this required. Our draft community centre strategy proposes that, and I reiterate, there will be no net production or provision by the, by the need centres being sitres in the white areas of the city. Starving resources and our centres will best meet the identified need. Fourth, we will continue to work in partnership with other local organisations to maximise our collective impact on tackling poverty. And fifth, reducing inequality by promoting inclusive growth, that is working with our partners in the City Year of Debt and the Combined Authority and Mayor to ensure that it's a focus on enabling as many people as possible to fully contribute and benefit from economic growth, addressing the issues of low pay, low skills and the lack of mobility in the labour market. I'm confident that because of this revised strategy and accompanying policies, we can build a Cambridge where everyone, from camking road to bartering road, has a role and stake in our city's prosperity. That continues to be my goal and the goal of this council, and we will achieve it.
Thank you, Castle Johnson. Castle, can you practice please?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I thank councillor Hipkin for his kind comments to me and to the leader of the, leader of the council with regard to the money that we have and has been negotiated in order to build council. We now are able to start that programme. There has been a gap of a year where we haven't had the money to go forward with our programme, and that's exactly what we will be doing now that we have got the money. And I do find it a little bit rich taking lectures from the leader of the group, group opposite, about looking after tenants. He's clearly forgotten what they did to the tenants in Water Lane. With regards to rough sleeping, and again, I think councillor Hipkin thinks he's the only person that notices that there's an issue, but doesn't necessarily address it. For everything that the city council does to help rough sleepers and to help the homeless, the government does even less, and you're fighting this consistent battle that, you know, it can't, it's no surprise that the less central government does and the more that it takes away, the greater the level of homelessness and rough sleeping that there is. So this, the idea in councillor Bick's annual win fest was that we should come out of the bunker on rough sleeping is somewhat ironic. He, and I know this is not in my portfolio, but he's talking about tree, he talked about trees, and I have spent a lot of time over the last few years walking the streets of King's Hedges, canvassing in King's Hedges, meeting residents in King's Hedges. And I invite councillor Bick, I'll provide him a map, Torrens found it the other week, we found seven of them in King's Hedges, they were lost. Well, and we provide councillor Bick with a map of the house again in King's Hedges, and I'll take him round and I'll show you lots of new trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Castle Price. Castle Smith, Castle Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I first of all congratulate you, and I look forward very much to working with you over the coming year. I want to start by paying tribute to the excellent work of our services across the council, especially in the streets and open spaces team and green from the services team with which I work. I'm proud to be a part of a council delivering this vision for the year ahead to help those who need it the most. Councillor Herbert has already mentioned A boards, and I want to reiterate a tribute to Gerry, councillor Gerry Bird, and to the officers for their hard work in putting together this policy, which was approved unanimously in the Community Services Committee for Exploration, and councillor Hipkin will be delighted that he's coming to the next Community Services Committee and forward plan. I want to speak to two key issues picked out of the annual statement, both linked to our aim to make Cambridge cleaner and greener. Our streets and open spaces service is already highly valued with excellent public satisfaction rates, it is already a service of which the city can be proud. However, it is indicative of the commitment to the team, of the team to doing the very best job that, like me, they are always looking to see how they can improve further. We are currently therefore undertaking several reviews, which are designed to help us ensure we do everything we can to provide the very best service for residents and visitors alike, and that we continue to protect and celebrate the resources of our wonderful city as it grows. We're therefore reviewing how we manage events of open spaces, we are looking at new management plans for our green spaces, we're reviewing public art, and we're taking a general look at how we serve the public. And councillor Hipkin delighted to hear an honest look about what we can do better and what we will do about it. The other thing I want to mention is our commitment, our continued commitment to greening our city. Building on initiatives such as the wonderful Victoria Meadows Initiative, I have asked officers to look into ways in which we can make our city more biodiverse and environmentally friendly, and this will include a thorough review of our current useful chemical leakers. Trees, have to mention trees. The money that the council voted through for trees in the last budget is going to allow us to plant ourselves approximately 250 trees in the following cycle. That's a net gain of trees way beyond the 2% in our tragedy, it's about 10%, I believe. However, we must mention the 14,000 trees that have been planted as part of the Great Night's Development, and the 2,000 trees that will come to funding to Meadow, and the 90,000 2013 to 2018 trees were planted. I'm proud of the work of our streets and open spaces team, I welcome actively scrutiny as an opportunity to celebrate the work that they and I are doing. And we look forward to the year ahead as a council as we seek to improve the life of this city.
We've given excellent time. Just hold on.
Thank you. I think we've got some knowledge that this is an ambitious programme work for the year ahead. It's only ambitious, it's only possible to be ambitious because it has to be high resources that are there to provide the funding for all these programmes. One of the major sources of funds is the income stream from the council's portion of the property. Lib Dems have criticised our, our ideas of that portfolio. Well, when we took over, when we were elected to run Cambridge in 2014, we discovered millions of pounds languishing in the bank accounts, learning very little. So far, we've released £50 million for investment in commercial property and other forms of investment. So far of that £50 million, we've managed to invest £31.3 million in investment to our students and in direct in commercial property. That income, that income from that £31.3 million is over £1.7 million pounds a year. If you step in the bank, you're earning probably 20% of that at the most. This is the only way we can have this ambition project is to be invested in the, in the commercial market, because that could get in too quickly. We will be investing in intermediate housing, intermediate residence housing, and we will invest in other forms of housing, as well as the big boost to social housing, which was already mentioned. But the, well, one of the options we could have taken would be to buy property off the open market for investment in combination. But that would have over-inflated that market, putting people who are wishy-washy on the market, onto the rest of the LA, even further away from it. So that we chose not to do. We chose very clearly to invest in commercial property because we could get into it reasonably quickly. It's been very difficult, we have had failures to buy some property in Cambridge, because it's strengthened the market here, and we intend on producing buying property where we can get a reasonable return. So, instead, we have no, no concerns about the investment in commercial property as a measure for the moment, but we can assure you that in the medium to long term, we will be investing heavily in community housing as well as social housing.
Thank you, Castle. So, no one else here want to speak? So, I'd appreciate it if you wish to speak with the members.
Okay, just to pick up just a mere few points. I think a number of points are made, and clearly we, we do recognise that other councillors come up with good ideas, and we do respond in committee, and there is a dialogue, but I do state the view that, because, and this goes back to how I responded as leader of opposition, which I remember councillor Pickett, another of his sort of snide speeches, this was when we took control of the council, he was very glad to be able to report that I did lead the opposition for quite a long time. But during that time councillor Bick, we presented annual statements every year that were comprehensive and looked at each aspect of the council's activity. You've effectively presented a speech rather than an annual statement, and I think that the residents of the city deserve that. This is supposed to be a debate about alternate visions and different thinking. And clearly, there are also elements in that, councillor Bick, and we would obviously want to engage you in rough sleeping, which you've got a keen interest in, and your group, because there's a number of people interested in disability or a different aspect. So we, we have continued the system of committees, which does give really good pre-scrutiny. Many of the issues that are the substance of our annual statement are coming up in the next round of the committees, and those that aren't will come up following that. And that is a great opportunity to change, and the fact that there are advanced opportunities just gives us, Mr Mayor, that chance to engage. In terms of the review of external scrutiny, there was, to use a phrase, Mr Mayor, above all, when we were in opposition, of a whole range of external activities, Cambridge Horizons, partnerships, you name it, and we, we've instigated, assisted by the chief executive review, and we hope to come up with a review that there is a consensus about. We do want to have better analysis and reporting back on what happens outside, and we've got an item on this afternoon's agenda about the combined authority. In terms of pump-touting, events are moving on. The council's view, which was expressed ahead of, ahead of myself, including because we've heard it, is that we will be seeking injunction in relation to Gower Hospital Lane, that is council land, that is property from which we should take responsibility for what activity occurs there. So our, obviously, this is a matter to be heard, and those people who are operating as unlicensed activities there can make their case, but it is a judicial process, they will clearly make their case also through the media. And I will answer more fully, Mr Mayor, that point later on. Thank you.
I'll go to the vote. Please can I see those in favour of their commentation?
Mr Smith?
And those against? We have no public questions, and we are now going to the update of the combined authority. In the consideration of the council, I propose to allocate up to 30 minutes of this hour. The leader will speak for up to 10 minutes. The questions for the leader of the council have been made up to two minutes, and the leader will have up to two minutes to respond. There will then be an opportunity for us to make a response up to two minutes. Are we agreeable?
Yes. Okay. So this is accountability for, and there will also be a report, which has been prepared for the next strategic resources committee. And when the member of you is completed, Mr Mayor, then there will be a process. I want to work closely on the accountability with the council representatives. I haven't reminded myself, I think it's councillor Cantrell who's taking the upper taking over. In terms of the overview and scrutiny committee of councillor Bajant from our side, and I think councillor Robinson's taking a role on the audit part of it. So, part of the opportunity is for this council to have a good process, but for us to work collaboratively. We are, Mr Mayor, on the combined authority first, because we believe it's in the interest of this city. And in addition to that, there are opportunities for us and the rest of Cambridge to gain. We, in some people's views, and there is evidence to support it, have more growth than we can actually manage in this city, and there are parts of the county that actually suffer severe disadvantage. They don't have infrastructure, they don't have a whole range of the opportunities and advantage. The economy can't just be moved north, but we clearly can work together, and that is definitely one of the threats. So threat one, we believe it's in our interest to be part of this. Threat two, there clearly are opportunities by working with other parts of the, of the county. Clearly, we also invested our effort into this because it delivers specifically on affordable housing, not just in the city, but also the £100 million for Housing Association housing as well. housing as well. If I could just briefly cover my contribution. I have taken the lead, subject to being confirmed, on spatial strategy, including looking at how does that link to the local plan, the local plans for South Cambridge. But spatial strategy on that Cambridge and Peterborough footprint, how does that link with the National Infrastructure Commission's commitment that Cambridge to Oxford is going to be a major focus of government analysis, potentially investments in infrastructure? A point that I make, that Cambridge is a crossroads and not a bookend. It has to be seen about how that Cambridge links out into Cambridge, but also into East Anglia. That role also includes leading on a land commission, which is to see better use of public land, both land that's in local authority ownership, NHS, government departments, Ministry of Defence. A focus on clean energy and clean growth, although I think those words are aspirational rather than the fact that either energy or growth is fundamentally implicitly clean, but clearly a focus on the environment. And as I mentioned earlier, a focus on disadvantage, both in thinking on planning and also in terms of specific interventions. Because I believe that if we are in a position with governments, and it does require government to agree, that we could marshal the resources of health, the county council, the councils, district councils, other agencies in action trying to tackle the inherent and real injustice in particular communities which moves on decades and decades. We benefited from councillor Robertson's return after a prolonged period of absence from this chamber. And he brought within the nineteen eighty eight, I think, anti-poverty strategy? Eighty nine? Sorry, I stand corrected, nineteen eighty nine. And some of those issues about intergenerational disadvantage and failure to actually tackle inequality, and that goes even worse for parts of the Fennel and parts of the county, are just the same in the current period of seven years of Conservative-led government as they were in the long period that we suffered a right-wing Thatcher government. So we just, that's some of the focus. But the aim is obviously to look at the whole activity of what's happening under the combined authority and the newly elected mayor. And I pay tribute to the two councillors who stood and fought hard in this chain, councillor Captrall and councillor Price. And the issue is obviously, what will this deliver for the city, for the county? And in addition to the report that's going to start with resources, I'm happy to answer the questions.
We have Castle Hittkin.
I've got two questions, if I may, to the leader. I wonder if he would comment on the resolution which has been supported by the major political parties, urging that future non-metropolitan combined authorities should not be required to have a directly elected mayor. Why does he think that that concord has come about in the light of what experience? Since the only experience we have is the friendship issue around combined authority in that respect. And the second question is, I see a lot of money slopping around for transport and infrastructure and so on, from the city deal, from the combined authority, from the county, from the city. Is there any way in which the financing of infrastructure could be put on a basis that somehow neatly combines these various sources of finance and makes sure that they weren't overlapping or duplicating each other?
So on the first question, in terms of conservative policy, I don't think the Conservative manifesto was the best record I've ever seen. And it immediately ran into issues. Clearly, it came as something of a surprise that the government, which only a year ago was pointing at us and saying last summer that it would only agree to devolution deals in those areas except for the mayoralty, is now saying that there is the opportunity of not having a mayoralty in the future. I think the, my issue, which I think overlaps majorly with this, is that, is that I don't yet hear anything from government that states that they are wedded or committed to devolution. Whatever we might think of the person who now edits the Evening Standard, he actually genuinely saw through changes about devolution that could yield a shift in power from Whitehall to tackle issues locally. So the issue of the mayoralty, yeah, we have signed up to it. But I have yet to see any evidence, councillor Hittkin, that if that mayor is elected, and certainly the way that the earlier part of this week was going, it looked increasingly less likely that she would get the kind of support that she interviewed in election for. I don't see there being any commitment for devolution. I'm very sceptical, other than the fact that they're committed to the existing devolution deals, that there will be significant devolution. I have yet to see any evidence that they would put in the level of infrastructure or housing funding that was part of this deal. If I turn out to be wrong, I will be lambasted in this chamber, and I am entitled to lambast me. But I do not yet see any commitment. And we obviously don't know yet who's going to be running the country on the ninth of June. In terms of the second question, clearly, there does need to be integration and more than just alignment of these different funds. It hasn't been fully answered in the devolution. Where does Peterborough, the county council, the local enterprise partnership, the city deal, and the funding for transport from the mayor or combined authority, where does it all fit together? So part of that certainly is, in terms of the city deal, the accountability is through the existing structure, including to this council and to the county and to South Cambridge. I've said before, I believe that the local enterprise partnership and the mayor authority really have to work towards bringing themselves together because the left has a significant amount of growth funding, and that should be managed the same. One of the definite commitments will be that there's going to be consistency in terms of criteria for investment, so similar assessment methods. And there clearly does need to be a decision about, well, how much of the mayor or funding is going to be for transport and what money is going to be for other aspects. I would hope to see infrastructure being the leverage to housing in the right locations, including near rail stations, near rail links. I'd like to see the right kind of improvements in Cambridge and nearby, but I'd like to see all of those different sources of funding working together. Clearly, there has to be a resolution between the county, Peterborough, and the combined authority in particular, who is leading on transport.
Thank you. I gave you four minutes because you had to answer two questions. Now move to councillor Country to ask his question, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank the leader for giving us the opportunity to scrutinise in relation to the combined authority. My question relates to transport, as members are aware. Congestion in a survey about twelve to eighteen months ago was the biggest issue that residents of the city ranked that this city faces. We have heard statements from the newly elected mayor, some of us more than others, that he is opposed, for example, to the bus corridor on the A four two eight, that he would like to see an underground in this city, and also that he sees the, he does not see his role on the city view board as being one that takes decisions but influences. The leader has a unique position, if I recall, in that he also sits on the city deal board and also on the combined authority. Could he just give a background to what progress has been made in terms of the relationship between those two entities in relation to this key issue of transportation for the city? And to what extent will those two entities, coming back to the earlier question, actually take decisions on a joint basis in relation to transportation for the city and the Greater Cambridge area?
And I think councillor Country will get a different question later on. So as with the response to councillor Hittkin, clearly, if the mayor has got a role for a transportation strategy to hold in Cambridge, and the city deal's got responsibilities specifically for, sorry, for the whole of Peterborough, and the city deal's got responsibilities for Greater Cambridge, the two have got to work together. So we have had a meeting this week. And clearly, we've got to work out, well, how does this focus work together? In terms of the issues about, well, what is the best future transport option? The city deal had been doing some initial work, and there's also been a transport group, a sort of task and finish group, looking at a number of options, which are looking to sort of up the game of the city deal in terms of its ambitions on both transportation mode and potentially interventions on congestion. The central area where I think we can make progress, and I hope that we can achieve it with the mayor, is to agree a shared terms of reference on a study. So I'm very keen that we look at underground in terms of seeing how, is that a practical option? What are the costs? What's the deliverability? What's the revenue ongoing costs? And I'll try and answer the rest of it as part of the later question.
I'll go thirty seconds if you wanted to, councillor Country.
In that, in that third second. So we will share, I mean, I hope that we can agree these, some terms of reference, Mr Mayor, about that study. And I believe that we will work jointly. Clearly, myself and James Palmer do have some different views on several issues. But the aim is, clearly, the idea of having a war through the newspapers or having a war in public isn't necessarily going to be the best route. And we will just see, we have to both deliver in the short term as well as review decisions that are coming up to the city deal. But we also have to have a clearer sense of, well, what is the long-term future for transport in this city and then beyond. So underground in the city, Mr Mayor, and in two seconds, options of what are the transport modes that would really help Cambridge and the wider Cambridge area? Is the mayor's passion for light rail deliverable? Question mark.
Can I just clarify to everybody, when they bring it up, it says thirty seconds left. Okay, just for everybody. Councillor Hittkin, do you have something else to question?
Mr Mayor, that wasn't my, I said, do I get a second metro?
You didn't get one, yes.
Since I'm speaking to the leader later on, it's not my speaking.
Two more. I have two where they can be back home.
Thank you, Mayor. I think food transport is fundamental on all sorts of fronts, including the health of the city in particular, with the high number of deaths that there are on the devolution. But learning for people to get around, people can't get the colleges and schools that they need to in order to get the kinds of education that they need. That has an impact on poverty in particular. Sustainability of the city and the reduction of difficulty getting housing is clearly, if that's in place, we're much improved. Now, the core issues for the city too, they're economic. The economy in the city has been damaged quite substantially. And it's because of ineffective use of limited transport road network. And that, that has two problems with it. It attacks on our time, the congestion, and it attacks on our health. Now, both of those make the city very unsustainable at the moment. The solutions, I should recognise that the road network is a network. It cannot be increased in its capacity because of the ancient roads that there are.
On point of order, Jim.
Can I finish, can I finish this?
It's a point of order, it's a point of order, so I think I'm entitled to ask it. On the agenda for today, it says the leader of the council will update council and answer questions from members. We're hearing a prolonged speech. I think there has to be a distinction between questions and speeches.
I agree with you, yes, you asked a question. Yeah, okay, because we'll ask the questions.
So my question is, how do these solutions fit into both the Greater Cambridge city deal and the combined authority? Because they're like a part of each.
We have a very limited road network in the city, and councillor Pickett earlier said that it was a Labour idea. Well, it was a city deal proposal to have a package of road closures. Clearly, that hit the buffers as a proposal. But in turn, we have a core zone which has a big impact on travel behaviour because it actually dissuades people from driving straight through the city. And we clearly also need to look at the inner ring road and exactly where the traffic's going. Mr Mayor, the sort of number plate based analysis, which the city deal is going to do during the summer, will, I think, give us quite a lot of information about exactly, it will depersonalise the data, but it will show exactly what some of these common patterns of routes are, how many people are driving through the city when they could be avoiding the city altogether. So there's definitely some issues about, just as you say, councillor Moore, we can't, we're not going to build roads. And we also, as you say, have a serious clean air issue, in common with other cities. And so a commitment to a clean air zone really does matter. And that does need to focus on the dirtiest vehicles to start with. As an aside, I have to say, and I'm not innocent, the habit of wood burning stoves isn't great either. But there's clearly an issue of sorting out the clean air. Largely, those issues will be resolved, I would imagine, with the involvement of the city deal because these are, us as a clean air city, and how we fashion the local roads in Cambridge are not strategic issues for the mayor. One, the issue that needs focused on is can we actually have a lot of transit going through the city? So if we compare fast buses, underground versus any opportunities to do things above ground, we will have a very useful analysis about how to avoid putting more traffic above ground.
Thank you. We have councillor Blackwell, and councillor Lespin, and councillor Hittkin. Can you please?
First of all, congratulations, George, and congratulations, Nigel. I guess I need to phrase this in the right format, and therefore I'll call on the leader to perhaps comment on the points I'm just about to make, if you so wish. Would you wish to? The point I want to make is clearly, beginning out of the combined authority and elected mayor, we know who that person is. It may be the case that he wishes to make the name himself, he may not. He may take a step back and listen to all the partners and take a more settled-like approach. But we'll see, the test will be in the, in the, in the future. But the test for me is going to be how effective this partnership will work, the devolved partnership that's been created on the Cambridge model, will it work? Will it be effective? And will there be a mutual respect and understanding of the partners involved? And I'm, I mentioned that in reference to George's point about that some of us in the country have more or less said they don't really want to play this game anymore. They've been trying to find a way forward for a partnership model, but they're not finding any success. And I think the issue for them is having this effective mutual understanding of what their neighbouring authorities and neighbouring cities' needs and ambitions are. And that's the test for them on the Cambridge model. We are used to working the Cambridge model, and that will be a test for us to go further. As I say, we don't know what the outcome of the election will be. There will be a new government. What colour, we don't know, but there'll be a new government, there'll be new ministers, there'll be new ideas, and whether devolution will be at the top of the policy.
tackling disadvantage in actually looking hard at some more radical ideas, including on transport, and also in making sure that the infrastructure is used well. The Mayor is also looking at how to generate private finance. So, some of those issues, because it's a combined authority, are not available to this council, and they're not available to the City Deal. The agreements, the devolution agreement says that local plans still remain, so local plans, including the two for us in South Cambridgeshire, are essential, and I would expect the Mayor to show respect for the need for them to be implemented, including the necessary infrastructure that makes that possible. So, I think, yeah, the council used to just meet here and never talk to other people 20 years ago, and that isn't the way to do business. And we've gone into this with open eyes, in the belief also that government will help us and free us with organisations like Highways England and Network Rail. I've had meetings with Highways England, I've yet had a meeting with Network Rail, there are a number of the issues that I just don't think, Council of Hittick, that the government was listening to this city on, whether or not we had a City Deal. And I think we're in the business to both test opportunities working together, but also test government's commitment, particularly because of what Cambridge delivers for the national economy.
Five more minutes left. Good sake, Castle of Hittick, might have supplementary question. Now, could you please go to Castle of Hittick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, my congratulations to you, your elevation is up. Speaking about the other Mayor in this campaign, you mentioned that you'd like to have an incinerator built in Cambridgeshire. I'm certainly not sure if you'd see these are proposals for unaccommoded deaths, but I'm concerned that an incinerator will reduce air quality, will reduce the incentive to recycle, and there have been great problems with the diversity in the Cambridgeshire with the general incinerator. So, what conditions would the Leader have in place before agreeing, before getting any support for an incinerator in Cambridgeshire?
Well, I think in the course of elections, and I know Council of Council's point, that we heard several of, Council of Parliament's views on the board six or eight times, I spent a lifetime, or half, I spent half a lifetime in recycling and rubbish, and I know more than many in this chamber about what the relative benefits are of all the different options for processing. Cambridge went for a relatively clean technology, the Mayor has no direct responsibility for waste and recycling. I can't see immediately that there's going to be an incinerator built. There is an incinerator, it was built in 1894, and it's now got a beer garden, and it's in Abbey Ward. It's the only one of its type in the whole world that survived from the 19th century, but I think that that is largely all technology.
Do you have supplementary questions? Yes, Castle of Hittick.
My last question of the Leader, will he support the volume of railway station on this beach? Will he support an upgrade of the A10, created here on Waterbeach? Will he support a reduction of traffic by what measures? I am not prepared to, I don't think it's fair to ask him, but will he support such measures as reduce the amount of peak time traffic coming into the city? Is that one of his objectives?
I'm starting to regret having questions without any notice. In terms of Whitsbeach, in principle, I think it does to me look right that a rail link would make a real difference to Whitsbeach. There are counterviews that if you, in the relativities of what comes first, that at the moment the A47 is dysfunctional as well. So, in principle, I would support rail to Whitsbeach as being something that would be transformational. In terms of Waterbeach and the A10, I haven't looked hard at the proposals, and I know the Mayor is supporting A10 and properly A10 South Cambridgeshire as well. We just have to look at how much road building is needed compared to other transport options. So, I'm encouraged by one element of his view about light rail or other off-road or on-road transport options, that if we don't need to have road building, then should we? The City Deal and the Mayor will be looking at a study about the sort of advanced transport. I think to make any major intervention in terms of stopping cars coming in or charging cars, you really have to have a high quality public transport alternative, and so I do see some of the look at that in terms of underground and transport beyond Cambridge as being an essential part of that discussion. So, unless we're talking to Network Rail, unless government is showing an interest in making public transport far better, we're not yet at the stage of coming up with a proposal. But I know that the City Deal itself is rethinking that, and I'm certainly in favour of being overminded about what interventions would achieve the reduction. As Council of Moore said, we do need to reduce peak time traffic.
Do you have supplementary questions? No, thank you so much. So, who's the next? Either of you, it's all our questions. Besides any last, a maximum of 30 minutes. After completion of the 30 minutes, the Executive Castle of Hittick has a problem with answering those too many questions that have not been handled. If we leave the bottom of questions, it's available to the information panel of page 61. Will the Castle of Hittick take it? Please put your questions, so you can show. Castle of Hittick has the first question. The Executive Castle of Hittick will have up to two minutes to reply. The questioner will have two minutes to put supplementary questions or to seek clarification of the response to the original question. The Executive Castle of Hittick Chair of Hittick will have further two minutes to reply to supplementary questions. So, can we start with Castle of Hittick?
Question one, please. Thank you for your question. I know that we all share a commitment to supporting the homeless and vulnerable in this city, and as you know, the council has invested over 1.2 million pounds in helping rough speakers, and we recently won an additional support round to 400,000. I want to repeat what I said in response to a report to the Cambridge News, it's not the quality of the house or to dispose of personal possessions, and we apologise that we were concerned that this has inadvertently happened. I've been out with our street teams and have seen their care for the homeless people they encounter, so I'll check thoroughly for personal effects, and I know they would be very concerned to hear about the possibility of personal possessions being inadvertently destroyed. We do have a legal duty to keep our streets clean and accessible, and of course, if it goes beyond our legal duty, everyone expects to see clean, safe streets, free passengers, interior or distractions. There is therefore no change to our policy of clearing out carboard or other materials which shall cause either an obstruction or a health risk, and perhaps this is particularly important in a time of heightened security not to allow a buildup of items like that. However, it also remains our policy not to dispose of personal possessions. We have begun a cross-council discussion of the issue, which will include talking to those affected and to homelessness agencies so that we avoid this kind of disturbance in the future. Where personal possessions need to be removed, they are currently being taken to our depot, and we will work with agencies to try to get people reunited with personal effects that are removed in its way. For the future, we are looking to put an accessible central electoral point in place for items to be claimed, and we will again work closely with other agencies to ensure that people are reunited with their personal possessions. Finally, I hope the people in this city can also be confident that the council and its partners are doing everything we can to support them to address the challenges they face and to help them move on from the streets.
Thank you. Any supplementary questions? Thank you, thank you for your response, and it's good to obviously hear that's the caring nature of that response as well. And obviously, it was a very distressing time for the poor guy who was sitting on the streets. What I'm not clear of is, I think what you said was, there's a policy in place that the men's actions have actually happened, so I wonder if you could answer why it happened? And if it's a result of that, there is a situation that we need to tie up the policy that we've got and change it and amend it, and if so, with what agency? Sorry, a few extra questions, but I think you're telling us the same thing. Very interesting.
Okay, I'm trying to uncover those. We are currently looking into the issue, as I said, if something has inadvertently happened, that's, we're all very sorry if that has happened inadvertently, we're looking into the procedures. If, as I said, we have begun a cross-council discussion of how we can move this forward, we are looking to have a central election where personal possessions can be placed. At the moment, they go to the depot. I wouldn't want to preempt any discussions that are currently taking place, but as I said, when these things inadvertently happen, of course, if there's something we can do to ensure that doesn't inadvertently happen in the future, then we would want to do that.
Thank you so much. I need to ask Castle of Hittick. Your question, please, Castle of Hittick? Question number two.
So, the short answer is no, neither I nor the officers or anyone else are happy to see cars parked, we shouldn't be there. Access to cars on Witsome Common is limited, and all of us wish to see it stay this way. For instance, the Forton George has agreed rights of access, but does not have permission to park on the common. I'm aware of the concerns raised about this by the Friends from Witsome Common and others, and when I attended their AGM recently, it was one of the things that was discussed. I've also been down to the site myself to see the issues, where I also saw evidence of the damage caused by delivery vehicles, when they do not, or are able to speak to the recently constructed designated loading areas which have been designed to protect the grass. At that meeting of the AGM, I emphasised the commitment of myself, fellow councillors and officers to resolving this issue, and I reemphasise this commitment here today. I think we all share our concern that this special space should be kept special, and that includes ensuring that unauthorized parking does not take place. As part of my commitment to this, I recently instructed officers to ensure that when ferry cars got on the market, as it currently is, it was put on the market with neither parking rights nor unrestricted access to vehicles. Officers are aware that this is an important issue, and they are working hard, we all of us, to seek a resolution to this problem.
Thank you for that, that's a good comment, Council of Hittick. In 2014, one of your predecessors, Frere Rayner, who was then Executive Councilor, made an agreement with Green King to improve the situation. It seems to me that the situation has actually got worse, and following discussions with Friends of Witsome Common, the situation is feeling very concerning. I'm glad to hear that you would have spoken to them as well, but I do believe that I must come to think of enforcing rather than perhaps just waiting to see what happens. Thank you.
Okay, well, I can tell you what we're doing at the moment, if that would help at all, and I hope that would also reassure the Friends from Witsome Common that we are really working hard on this issue. A new automated barrier was recently installed, I believe under my immediate predecessor, Councilor O'Malley, after the unreliability of the first barrier. These are helping us to restrict access to unauthorized users, and we've also ensured that taxis no longer drop off customers either outside of either Witsome House or Forton George unless the passenger has a disability and has a possible breach. Currently, as fit for the enforcement, our enforcement policy, and there is a policy we need to go through here, we are seeking informal resolution of the issue of parking outside of the pub. Our officers have had several conversations with the new landlord, and we hope that the landlord and the Green King will be able to help us resolve the issue at this stage to everyone's satisfaction and in accordance with previous agreements. We are then currently exploring options with our enforcement team, and in next step, we are not able to go to a resolution at this stage. This could, at that stage, lead to civil action, we also have the option of seeking to review the access rights. We of course have to gather evidence and use the proper procedures for this, and we're very grateful for the evidence that some residents are providing to us with photographs of infractions when they see them. Now, if enforcement at that level didn't work, we do have the option of prosecution, I believe, under the 1988 road traffic event, but I believe that's the case. We would also, this would of course be a serious protracted process there, and whilst we absolutely do not rule it out, I would much rather see resolutions by other means if we can, and this was the view also expressed by the Leader of the Council when we took advice on this. So, I hope that goes some level to reassuring that we are acting on this and have a sense of what the way might be.
Thank you, Castle of Hittick. Castle of Hittick, please.
Question for you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to do a question. The public spaces deception order in relation to antisocial behaviour and pump touting was the result of extensive consultation. It follows earlier efforts and consideration. A bylaw was considered, a bylaw was adopted previously for the area of Bridge Street. A voluntary code of practice was applied, but a number of operators refused to abide by it or even listen to it. Following the consultation, we were also assessing the antisocial behaviour and a whole range of incidents, the views of the police, because they were severely unhappy about the behaviour of touts for several reasons, and the conclusion was that the PSPO was a good idea. We since then have issued over 40 tickets in terms of penalty notices, and several have been issued to people on a set indication. We've always just kept our eyes open about what was practical. The advice that we had from lawyers was that we couldn't actually justify a PSPO on the grounds of just touting, i.e. advertising, or just generally being on the streets, and that we had to stipulate what was effectively quite a high bar of verbal touting. We will continue to implement the PSPO, but we also, Mr. Mayor, as I've alluded to earlier, plan a further intervention, because I don't think the unlicensed pump operators are really listening to anybody in the city.
Thank you so much. Who has supplementary questions?
I do, thank you. I should clarify, my question will submit it before I listen to you, I'm a Cambridge independent. The issue that troubles me is that we're saying the same thing with this PSPO we saw with Mill Road, that at least to a certain extent, the community's facing this problem. The pump hats have now moved to the Epi Ward outside Cambridge Station. I know that further initiatives are planned, and I would just like to seek some reassurance from the Leader that any further initiatives are done in such a way that they do not simply move the problem elsewhere, anti-sighties not necessarily out of mind when it moves its wars rather than the city centre.
Well, I mean, having been a resident like many in the chamber for a long period of time, there's been a nuisance moving around the city, but I think it definitely multiplied when the relocation to Gavossdale Lane took place. So, we did have issues when pumps are being operated again without authorisation, without any approval, and sort of... plan a further intervention, because I don't think the unlicensed pump operators are really listening to anybody in the city.
Thank you so much. Who has another question?
I do, thank you. I should clarify, my question will submit it before I listen to you, I'm a front page editor at Cambridge Independent. The issue that troubles me is that we're saying the same thing with this PSPO we saw with Mill Road, that at least to a certain extent, the community is facing this problem. The pumps have now moved to the Epi Ward outside Cambridge Station. I know that further initiatives are planned, and I would just like to seek some reassurance from the leader that any further initiatives are done in such a way that they do not simply move the problem elsewhere, anti-sites not necessarily out of mind when it loses its wars rather than the city centre.
Well, I mean, having been a resident like many in the chamber for a long period of time, there's been a nuisance moving around the city, but I think it definitely multiplied when the relocation to Gavroster Lane took place. So we did have issues when pumps are being operated again without authorisation, without any approval, and sort of contrary to any sense of Jesus Green, and it is possible, and the advocates of one of the unauthorized pump operators has been seeking a planning permission next to Clare College. I cannot promise councillor Connel that there won't be some dispersal to some extent. I do commit that we are seeking a different route in addition to the PSPO. The reason why we went for verbal was that we don't, and the reason why I think we can fully defend what we've done in the Mill Road area, is that the result did merit the route and some of the temporary inconvenience that might have resulted early on. Because of Perdah, it's been officers who've been leading on this, but we will be fully accountable for our plans to intervene on Gavroster Lane, and we will evidence the case of the nuisance, not just to people accosted in the street, but also the fact that cyclists and pedestrians can't walk through from Newham by that route, and the other issues that come as a result of the way that these operators work. They do not abide by any of the rules, they do not link to the camp conservatives, and we do not think that Gavroster Lane is a suitable location for the scale of operation that needs to take place.
Thank you so much. Councillor Ray, please.
Mr Mayor, congratulations. Question four.
And thank you, councillor Ray, for your question. Bringing back empty properties into occupation is a priority owing to the shortage of residential accommodation available within the city. Demand will continue to increase as Cambridge's population is set to grow by about twenty per cent over the next ten years. In relation to this, Cambridge City Council employs a full-time empty properties officer within environmental services for whom additional funding is required. Council data confirms that there are currently in the region of five hundred empty properties in the city that have been empty for at least six months. It's important to note that three hundred and seventeen of those empty properties were recorded as being empty before between six and twelve months. Therefore, many of them are indeed part of a natural turnover of property between lets being sold or refurbished, et cetera. The empty properties officer is aware, currently aware, of seventy-five long-term empty privately-owned properties which without their ongoing intervention would remain unoccupied and a wasted resource within the city. Empty homes can also have a detrimental impact on neighbourhoods and the environment. They can quickly fall into disrepair and become magnets for antisocial behaviour and vandalism. The empty property officer considers these factors when prioritising their investigation, action in relation to such properties, as well as taking into account any response received from the individuals responsible for each property and consideration of their circumstances. They have also written the empty homes loan policy with a view to the empty homes loan scheme being available as an incentive to owners imminently. Between the beginning of April 2016 and the end of March 2017, a total of thirty-nine long-term empty properties were brought back into use with the intervention of the empty property officer.
Any further questions?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Any other questions? Many residents regard the new social housing at Orkings Road, at Eting Road, and in fact, until very recently, intermediate housing that is close as unoccupied and cannot understand the delay in getting them completed. What steps will you, as a senior councillor, take personally and by way to get resolved the remaining issues that would be easily cancelled in the residential property sector?
I imagine you could have asked me that in the first place, I knew that was the supplementary. You're absolutely right, there are properties in all those areas in Water Lane, in Orkings Road. Apart from the reason that they are empty and are left, is because some of the substandard work was done by Kinkmoat. Kinkmoat being the company that you, as the only one who were in charge of the council, put in place of the house building. I met with officers two days ago for an update on where we are, exactly where we are with those properties. Many of the intermediate houses in Water Lane have now been let. I understand that the properties, the council properties in Water Lane are now about to go on to the direct letting's website, so they will be available for people to bid on. But I do find it slightly ironic that you want to consider those as, we could have taken those properties off, and we could have let them out, but unfortunately, Kinkmoat didn't keep to their side of the bargain, and the standard in some areas and the snagging work that hasn't been done, and their fulfillment of planning obligations and completion of paperwork has been absolutely abysmal, which will be pleased to know, thanks to us, they will no longer be building homes for them.
Councillor Ray.
Another one to expertly read for the benefit of councillor Ray.
This is clearly, because nobody else reads, of course, clearly a satisfactory situation, but everything was done within the council's control to resolve this as quickly as possible. For those residents not able to use the stairs during that temporary period, they had access to a stair lift, and arrangements were made for city home staff to be regularly on-site and to help residents with particular issues in carrying items between floors. The existing lift is maintained as part of an annual servicing agreement with a specialist lift contractor, and repairs are carried out by the same specialist as required on both a routine planned and response basis. The lift at Stansley House is approximately twenty years old, and on this occasion, when it failed, the parts required were not readily available and had to be specially sourced directly from the original manufacturer in Germany. Now, despite constant pressure on the contractor and the lift manufacturer, the delivery of parts did not materialise as quickly as promised, and the extended delay did lead to some unavoidable inconvenience for residents. Those not able to use the stairs temporarily still had access, as I've said, to the stair lift. As soon as the parts arrived in the UK, they were expressly delivered to the site and actually installed by a manager from our contractor, rather than wait for the next available engineer. The installation is now fully functioning, but the project is also included in our five-year plan work programme for complete replacement of the lift in 2018, 19, 2000, 2000? That's something further ahead than even you, the subject's budget.
Councillor Ray, you have any more?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks to councillor Bryce for the explanation of the history of this, which I'm aware of. The question that I want to follow up with is to ask you whether he would have thought that it would be logical and sensible and sensitive in this kind of situation, that there is some sort of fast track in place for these cases where there is a single lift, it can go wrong, and there's no immediate parts available. It seems to me that lifts are things that people really, really depend on, it's part of their lifestyle if they live on the floor above the ground, and that there should be some form of instant service, instant provision of parts, even at a premium, for cases in like this, in a sheltered housing development. We all know that parts can take a while for given piece of equipment to arrive, but I just think that this is not just any given piece of equipment, it's one that the council needs to be providing first-class overnight replacements, and should be paying to do that.
Mr Mayor, in an ideal world, yes, of course, that would be the case, this lift, as I understand it, has been maintained thoroughly well and satisfactorily by this company throughout that period, or throughout that period. It breaks down once, and unfortunately, because of its age and the country of origin of the manufacturer, it was difficult, but it took a long, long time to get the parts. It's not ideal when, you know, you've got a lift that people need to use that doesn't work, that doesn't happen very often, it's not something that we want to see happening. And, you know, I will speak to officers and find out what else we can actually put in place, but I suspect, given it was a breakdown of a fairly old lift, that there wasn't actually anything that could be done in order to speed that up, even by paying more money for it.
Can I just, out of personal experience, a place where a lady, opposite to her, was an lady who relied on the stairlifts, and she telephoned my castel a few days later to say that she, the lift has broken, and she was stuck upstairs, and she was doing some sort of solvent, and could I try and help her out? So I had to press motion to her, and tried to get the council to help her out. So it can be quite dangerous, and these people, so I wonder if this is, I am able to...
Just, I'm quite, all of this, Mr Mayor, I understand your regards, but this is in the realms of questions to councillors from the opposition that previously laid down. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that's entirely helpful, I mean, I'm happy to talk to you outside here, but I'd rather be wearing your exhibition.
My bad, I'll call it, but council had a four-year or so?
That was twenty ten, twenty ten, maybe. Was it even less?
Question from councillor Patrick.
Question of slipper out to the reader?
The extension of the levity to beyond its normal means that the city deal, along with the council, rearranged, the councillors rearranged all manner of meetings, including aspects like the anti-pollution conference and the fire prevention process. So the city deal had no real choice but to rearrange to its schedule in July. After that knowledge is known, and given that there are at least two significant items of business, there's been liaison with the local liaison forums and through them with residents' associations, we're not going to try and sort of shoehorn all of that into a meeting. The proposals have a mayor meeting about Milton Road and the PM meeting as well. So I think that the issues will be given significant weight. I know that there are a couple of people who say, well, this is going into school holidays. I think we just did not have the time to have both the work done on a number of these issues, to give them due consideration through the assembly, and then come to the board without this timetable that we've adopted, councillor Patrick.
I thankfully accept that comment, it's interesting, I did look at the city deal website and the agenda for the July meeting, was that it was going to start at 2pm, so the update of schedule that I've seen this morning does help in terms of residents being able to voice their views and their concerns regarding some very important issues relating to a number of projects that impact the city, in particular, the Milton Road project and also the bus road coming from the west along the A428. I'd like to ask the leader, though, that given the comments he's just made regarding time pressures and officers' reports and so forth, and also giving his earlier comments regarding the discussions between the city deal and the combined authority and the mayor, would it not be more appropriate to pause these schemes, to step back and have another look later on, once you have more data, before crashing forward in the way that the city deal appears to be doing, with schemes that are not supported by the residents of the city?
Well, if you just, we haven't got a lot of time to debate this in my response, but the proposals for Milton Road will be considered by the city deal officers based on what's called the do-optimum, or at least starting with that as the framework, and looking to see what is needed. There does need to be, given particularly with the opening of a new station, the opportunity for us to be very clear, both that the modelling of the traffic and the needs of efficient bus services and the aspiration to have a stopping bus service on Milton Road are met. So you and I may not agree on much on this whole territory, but I do believe that there is a persuasive case for the evolution of a good scheme for Milton Road in the current circumstances, and I believe that there is room to come up with a scheme that satisfies the needs of residents, of cyclists, of bus users, and it's not simple, and there will be some that don't agree with me when that happens. In terms of the other scheme, in terms of the options of on-road, off-road, I haven't reached a view of that on-road versus off-road. I do not think that, I will not live in the world of hope that the girdan interchange will happen, or that an underground and a light rail will suddenly happen, but we do need to link what we do to the aspiration of potentially of a transformational system of transport through underneath the city centre. So in terms of Milton Road, I don't think that what's going to come forward is in any way going to conflict with whatever's going to come out of other projects. I'm up for discussion, and we will see what the officer proposals are in relation to the proposals west of the A428. My last point is, if we don't have quality public transport, the local plan inspector is likely to reject the local plan for that part of the area. That is not a risk that I or South Cambridge District Council are willing to ride.
Yes, thank you, councillor Haines. We have now completed your questions, we are moving to item sixteen A, of the council. The woman and the secretary will have up to ten minutes between them, the proposal and secretary of the alignment also have up to ten minutes between them, while the divisions have up to three minutes to answer. When the language is told, it's on and it's lost, I call it a bonus from the reading motion, you know, for the debates. Another person, councillor Connel, speak to the question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For those here who are aware, boots for the construction service underwent an agent revision on 27th of February this year. There is no doubt that the changing boots were due after the starting season minor of the department's funding due to continuing growth of some things. I understand that the experience of these changes has been very varied across the city. In my own confidence, the results were clear. Many bins, particularly on the newer estate, were not selected for several weeks. We have been told that some problems were to be expected, and we do understand that some major change will demonstrate some disruption. However, I'm struggling to believe that former executive councillors were knowingly signed off on a plan that left bins uncollected for such an extended period of time. If this level of disruption was expected, we, the four councillors, certainly were faced more concerns and approach to be more completely. As well as the simple amount of time available to pick the boots, problems were mentioned if staff knew the boots were not given any information about the plan. Councillors and residents had contacted the council, often several times, before regular collections started. Even then, on the first attempt to collect any of the bins in common areas, staff found they did not have a necessary code or key to access them. The problem is unfortunately, still ongoing. Seventy-six roads had missed collections last week, the majority in front of them. The council itself admitted that it is still failing to collect some bins, even within the target four working days of the due date. Anyone who has managed to speak to the events side or a team of staff knows that breakdowns in offices are inevitable and need to be handled. If a service can no longer collect bins on time due to what was characterised as a normal operational incident, then it's clear that we need to give the service the door to the needs. it needs. Against this background, it's somewhat surprising to learn that this already struggling service is currently running with extra staffing vehicles and a reduction in resources in plan. Regarding the amendment that's being tabled, we wait to see what members' opinions, in particular the executive councillor, have to say. And I hope that she disagrees with the leader and feels it appropriate to apologise on behalf of the ruling group, but the problems experienced so far. We are not yet clear that a scrutiny committee, which due to the format used involves officers and executive councillors defending a written reform of policy decisions, is the best mechanism for an open and non-partisan discussion. Rumours that frontline staff are being asked to retract public statements about the pressures they face or say concerns, has made councillors' work more difficult, if staff are in fear of speaking out. But if this is a genuine attempt to find the best way forward and give the service the resources it needs, then we will welcome it. Finally, it has been reported that the waste collection service is facing a possible further deduction in the frequency of collections. We hope that the new executive councillor can reassure us that she will not simply try to redefine waste collection service in the city to a lower standard instead of tackling the problem now in first.
Do you have a second there? Would you like to speak now? Yes, to me.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
We have three, four minutes or so left.
Okay. Yes, I would like to persuade the executive councillor that any report that is produced is done rigorously and as independently as possible, without the unnecessary pressure on any of our permanent staff. I think we have to go back and ask ourselves, how do residents view the services of the council? Beyond the many services staff, council services, the one that comes up when you ask people every time, what is the most important? It's waste disposal. That is the most urgent and carries the biggest recognition factor of all the services that the council has to offer. And this is important because it sets the tone to all the council's activities, and I think therefore what we're discussing has wider implications. I'd like to take examples, concrete examples, of why I think we have to have a searching investigation. This card was left on a number of bins in a block that's in my ward. This card says that the operatives are unable to take away the contents of the bins because they are contaminated. It turns out that this card, as you can probably see in the top blue corner, is from the South Cambridge District Council. So there are operatives who are coming into an area that they don't know, and following a different set of customer practices, a different set of regulations from the city. So they have put this on the bins. They put this on the bins to say they cannot take away the contents because they are contaminated. Whereas the same bin, the same contents for years have been cleared by the Cambridge City Council. That, that is an example to show you the kind of problems that we have. There is a particular problem with blocks of flats. For the most part, my investigation suggests that householders, residential householders are on the whole quite satisfied, that there is a huge problem with blocks of flats. And I think that has to be looked at most, most carefully. I have here a letter which I would like to read in part to you from the managing agents of blocks of flats in my ward. The person says, "The only thing the residents see really for their money in the council tax is the bin service. The service over the last few months has been diabolical, continued missed collections, and having to phone the council to pay that far too much in my time. Those management agents who are not paid to sort issues like this with council aid. The estate is having to pay cleaners to beg away services for rubbish. Residents are having to pile rubbish in their homes, which in a small flat is just not reasonable. If we had not taken this action, we would now have a serious health hazard. I give every praise to the professional staff and their team. They have to deal with complaints from across the city. They have helped us, but it's not effective, so now I have to get to my phone, and I have to go and actually seal bins so that they do not become so poor to stay uncollected." The really is an issue, as I think you can probably see. The service, let it goes on, the service department blocks have been appalling. There's been no information on the website, house collections have been raised, but flats on the same road have missed. The residents have phoned the council, they've been told to phone the management agents or sort the problem out themselves. This was said to a retired seventy-year-old lady who was expected to sort out the bins for twenty-four flats. Please note, with the ten thirty apartments in the city, pay us at least fifteen hundred per apartment in council tax, about the same as a smaller house, and for the land area, intensive payments in block of flats is much higher compared to a house. So please, councillors, can you support your professional team to provide the service to department blocks that justifies the council's debt? Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Councilor Roswell has given notice of an amendment which is a place to send on the information back. Have you surrendered? Have you had? You have ten minutes between you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr Mayor. I would like to propose this amendment that we stick to the original plan of an annual review which goes to environmental services. I see no reason to jump the gun to a member-level review and miss out on this crucial aspect of council procedure. As councillor Cullen has said, there have been some issues in what was being the most significant restructure of residential waste collection in forty-two years. As Ian Coleman, the lived and executive councillor for environmental services, said, in two thousand and five, when waste collections went down from weekly to four ninety collections, it would be wrong to suggest there were no problems when the new service was introduced. Of course there were. You can't make a big change to a fundamental service and expect forty-five thousand households to all cope with it perfectly from day one. Nor can you expect to make far-reaching changes in a large organisation without some people making mistakes at some point. Now, that was actually a much smaller and simpler restructure than the one we've just been through. This recent restructure has involved one hundred and twenty thousand homes, which is nearly three times as many. This change not only required residents to make changes, but it also involved completely new rounds, which councillor Tullerton mentioned came from not only the city of Cambridge, but also South Cambridgeshire. So this has created some issues. If, like myself, the members' opposite, both my colleagues on this side, have been doing a lot of canvassing and meet with them recently, you have a list of houses. For the life of you, some of them you just can't find. You know they exist, you know the names of the people that live in them, but you can't save them. Now, this is exactly what happened with bins. Because the bin collectors, the waste teams, were working on the streets, they simply didn't realise where some of the bins were. However, this was expected, and this has been planned before. So when residents called in to say that their bins had not been collected, a special team has been in place to go out and collect them. One of the reasons, despite such a major shake-up of these rounds, collection rates have remained at over ninety percent, and in the last four weeks, over ninety-nine percent of bins have been collected. One of the reasons for these changes has been the rapid development in Cambridge. It hasn't been even with one extra bin needed round by round, but big new developments adding hundreds of homes to rounds. This restructuring has evened out the grounds, which as we go forward, will ensure a more reliable service for residents with fewer missed bins, plus providing a more regular working day for our waste crews to give them a better work-life balance. I would like to take this opportunity firstly as a resident, and secondly as a councillor, to thank all of the officers on waste crews. A lot of hard work and effort has gone into making these changes, which in the long run will make the waste collection more efficient, more reliable, whilst at the same time saving us all money. I am now proud to be a member of this council which gives such good service to its residents, and I look forward in my new role to maintaining and improving this service where possible and to working closely with the waste teams and officers.
Councilor Roswell, uh, councillor Roswell, would you like to speak now? Six minutes. We're going to have a debate, so councillor, do you wish I to?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So no apology there. The, um, the ones I would like to make are the questions that I would like to see answered. So the way the speakers' opposite deal with this now is not necessarily to give the answers, but if they, if they feel that the committee meeting that's already scheduled is capable of dealing with these issues, then the amendment is fine with me. But these are the questions. Was sufficient effort put in ahead of twenty seventh of February to ensure that existing routes were accurately documented? If not, why not? Who was responsible? And did the executive councillor check that this was all in place? What on earth happened to flats? How could a whole type of class of residential accommodation be left so unplanned and uncommunicated with it? Why did this happen? Was there any plan? Did the executive councillor check there was a plan in place? Does the executive councillor accept that the routine trotting out of Soviet-era performance levels has not been telling the story at all correctly? Is it not the case that these performance percentages spoke only to bins the service had documentation for, and that the real performance or non-performance story was the zero performance level for the bins they didn't even know existed? The new, the, the bins, the bins that never appeared, for example, on the website, promising delivery for collection another day, because no one knew that they existed? Does the executive councillor feel that the reporting process worked well where there were problems? Are there records of corner response times? Was adequate extra staffing and phone lines provided, expecting a big wave of contacts as would have happened? Is there any truth that the city council staff were refusing to register complaints claiming it was a matter for South Cambridge and not the city council? And what were the relevant daily complaint statistics for this? How much additional budgetary provision was planned to address the problem solving and the bedding in of the new system? What has been spent in reality? Can we check that the financial position of this change is on track? Could a scatter map of customer reports and complaints and late collections be provided so that, so that members can see and get a clear understanding of the areas affected across the city, because apparently they were not yours? Could the executive councillor comment on rumours that city council staff and South Cambridgeshire staff have been asked to bore unequal weights of this reorganisation? Does he agree it's about time to rethink the way the supposedly integrated service with South Cambridgeshire is actually two separate workforces on different conditions of employment? How many heads of the joint service have the bins since its inception? Why has it been so difficult to fill this desperately important job? Can the executive councillor share the content of exit interviews from the incumbents to date so that members can see what the factors have been in the turnover? These are the sort of questions he said. If members' opposite can convince me that we can address these in the committee meeting, I am more than happy with the amendments.
Thank you very much for the, uh, for the words, and congratulations, Mr Mayor. I greatly welcome your elevation to the first assistant of Cambridge. Yeah, this was a complete chaos, and I, can I congratulate the new executive councillor on her elevation as well? You have your hands full going forward. Because there seems to be a bit of name shifting going on with the shared race board, where the officers brief the unholy laboratory coalition councillors, but then receive very little feedback. I had multiple phone calls with officers and was fully briefed, and it propulated only after a couple of phone calls that deliberately the flats were used as a kind of overflow in the planning implementation. And of course, there are many more flats in the city of Cambridge than in South Cambridgeshire. So if the leader then says, "Oh, that's not boring, because in South Cambridgeshire there were no complaints," well, it is because there are ma, there are much fewer flats in South Cambridgeshire than in the city. So the question that we, the, the member of you should be asking is, in addition to the questions that councillor Big just pointed, is, did the city executive knowingly sell the flats as a kind of overflow in order to mitigate the, the, the chaos? And why was this agreed to when we clearly said that the shared service should have exactly the same impact in both the city and South Cambridgeshire? So somewhere in the system, something has gone wrong, and I think that needs to be thoroughly investigated.
Um, councillor Obray.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to say it's one in different ways, which is, we're not going to solve the problem here about the bins question. We can't back and forth on the facts, because the facts don't really exist, and we don't really know what they are. We know that, I tell you, you're in a service, it's, well, welcome to the job, you know, you've walked into it at a perfect time, a bit like, well, thanks for arriving with the trees, I guess, but it's perfect timing to, to take on this really tricky issue. But let's just remember, this, this is, as you all know, a volcanic service that we provide, it's a thing that, that people believe we often do all day when you work. And you can have all the statistics you like, but the people that whose bins have not been collected will not believe you, because the evidence against it is fully anecdotal. And I'm glad, I know that my evidence against the bins services, that my bins were empty. And not even, I moved, and they weren't empty in my new property. So I, I have some anecdotes that my bins were empty, and being told as a normal reporter and normal cause is, is being delivered to a committee where the ruling group, the majority, is not going to protect those people whose bins were empty, they just want an open understanding of what went wrong. So if you're in a service industry, which we are in this case, and you've copped up, and you only know you've copped up when your residents tell you you've copped up or your customers talk to you, you just accept that, and say, "We're going to have an open and unusual process to examine the evidence and, and apologise." It's not that hard. When you're in a service industry and your customers think you've made a bad job here, what do you think? Whatever the facts are, you apologise. That's how you rebuild trust, and it's not just the trust of the legal group, it's the, it's the trust of the residents within all of their councillors. Because they come to us and say, "My bins are empty, what are you doing about it?" And we say, "Oh, yeah, I've been in council, but it's obviously getting worse." And then we're going to bring a report to a committee where they hold a majority. So we know that, however good the report is by the officers, and I'm sure it will be, it won't be seen by our residents as open and fair and, and that it's been properly tested. So let's just have a member-level review, let's just accept that this is a service that we're delivering, and that some of our customers are unhappy, and we should address those customers' concerns.
We have councillor Austin, please.
I understand that managing any change is a difficult point, and I had hoped that we'd got the full and proper preparation for this one before we actually embarked on it. From the residents' point of view, we're only ever entering to change if we're going to make things better, possibly making things the same but making things better. All we've seen to date is making things worse. Now, it completely baffles me that you are getting the conversations and the concerns that we are on this side. Either the residents still, they can't speak to you, or they feel you're going to do nothing about it. But everybody on this side has had numerous calls and concerns. Diabolical is the word that was read by David McKeever, diabolical. How are we going to put that message across that what is being done is actually better, not worse?
Thank you, councillor Austin. And we have councillor Adam.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Eadie's terribly happy to speak on this. Despite living 0.9 miles away from my ward and starting off with my bins in Romsey being twice late, scrolling around Trumpton, I've had it in the neck numerous occasions that the bins have not been collected. I was hoping it would settle down because I spent time on bins last year doing a round and I spent time talking to management. I thought this bill would be in, it's quite clever, I think, good to quote for previous lead councillors when you have a change. Even this weekend, going out and getting it again from people in the flats on Addenbrook Road, the blue bins absolutely overflowing. It's not fixed yet. Good ones are going to get it in the neck. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr Mayor. We have a person who can assist.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I've been sitting and listening to the debate with great interest because if you look at the original motion, we now debate motions and amendments together at the same time, it's calling for a member-led review into the waste disposal service. And the question is not whether there were issues or problems with the changeover for the 102 villages in South Cambridge about waste disposal service, it's the issue of whether it's better served to discuss that through the current scrutiny committee system or whether we set up yet another level of administration and discussion to go through that. The Labour Amendment says that it will be discussed at the correct scrutiny committee, which is already in place, that there will be a review at that committee, and yet the Liberal Democrat group want to set up something else as well. It doesn't make sense to do that, it's already on the timetable, it will be discussed properly at the scrutiny committee where the Liberal Democrats, even if they're making long-distance phone calls, can turn up.
Thank you, councillor Austin. Councillor James Cross.
I had a conversation with a lady a few days ago, she's actually very disabled, she's got a brain tumor and her back is... She is on this twerking return, so she's been on it for years, so it doesn't worry. Nobody quotes, but it's a low term. And then she plays head and heart to head in the street, much more today, so she gets turned around that case numerous times. Is there any way she can go along with this?
Can you praise councillor Price, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, you know, not going to say that the Liberal Democrats haven't had complaints because clearly they have. I represent King's Edges, as everybody knows, in King's Edges there are lots of flats. I've not had one single complaint from anybody in the ward and to the best of my knowledge, nor of any of my fellow ward councillors, about their bins not being collected. Moreover, in last week, whilst knocking doors, we had 636 conversations on doorsteps with people, not once were bins mentioned. I do think this is another example of a liberal Democrat overkill, and I do relate the phone calls they're talking about on the street each other.
Thank you so much, councillor Price. We have now councillor Tim Moore.
Thank you. I'm rather disturbed about how Cambridge City scrutiny committee can scrutinize the delivery or collection of my bins around Queenettis where the delivery route is dealt with by South Cam's rights. So this isn't so easy. Some of the issues have been resolved very quickly. Thanks to the resolution mechanism, I had a hidden bin in a set of flats that was resolved the next day. It took a bit of time to find out how that worked, and they were very concerned because their bins were overflowing and they predicted work when that button was pushed. There were other issues which have also been resolved, such as where the routes work are going on on Hills Road. So contacting the senior manager has worked, however, my bins and many other people's bins have been left repeatedly uncollected. So it may well be just the different grounds and how they're set up, but there is a problem.
And you, councillor Moore, we have councillor Hart now to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, congratulations. I'd just like to draw on councillor Ben's viewpoints, which I also kind of... To me, a review committee is a group of councillors in a way somewhere, if you're available, discussing what the rights and wrongs of something that we like, okay? Now, a scrutiny committee, a scrutiny committee, as my understanding is open to the public, other councillors are allowed to come to the table and have their viewpoints, speakers, you know, the whole scrutiny, that's the key word. Scrutiny, that's what it's all about. And to review, to have a secret meeting, that's not, that's not... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I support Jerry Benson's and his knowledge of the constitution, and I just really wish that you could just rule this democratic discussion to the place.
Thank you so much, councillor Hart. Please show your bike for me, please. We have councillor Todd Jones next to speak, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Congratulations on coming back to Cambridge. Congratulations on your wonderful development. Yes, I just want to follow on some comments that Kevin Price said about King's Edges. Just a couple of points might be really, I mean, we did have an issue in the plots of flats in Cockle Row when the army team sprang into action, I'll get that sorted out with the help of our opposite team who reacted very quickly to our concerns related to common bins in the Cockle Row flats. The only other, I can think of significant issue in our review regarding late collection was the epidemic in South Street and Luke's View, actually reached the homepage of Cambridge New. Now, for me, it's a total over-exaggeration of the whole issue and the fact that Dr Bailey got things that'd been the same to me when this issue was brought up with him. Now, the particular circumstances in the way that the bins and set overviews were stored at the back of South Street View on Alford Row, and it just points up the whole issue about complexity of a major change in the service and collection arrangement. That's all now been sorted out and I think the residents are very happy with the evaluation. Apart from those issues, I'm not aware of anything else that's been brought up on the doorstep for two months now campaigning and contacting residents. So I really do think this whole issue has been blown totally out of proportion, and as I've been said by other members, the environmental scrutiny committee is clearly the right question to take.
Thank you so much, councillor Lewis, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I was about to speak, but a few things have raised concern. The process of moving to a shared service has played on with him, but I do think the environment service scrutiny committee is the right place to discuss it and the report brought around, it said, is a big baronial item. But the thing that the executive councillor said about finding thousands isn't the minimum because when we got around knocking on doors, we're voluntaries, holding the paid staff of the working service, so that sounded, isn't it? We do politics because we care for these people professionals and we should get a hand over from the greatest working service staff to help people find the right places, the right place. But the London should also take some responsibility for paralyzing the bins service for the sheer volume of fat and new paper.
We have good councillor Roberts, a recent councillor Grant wants to speak, we have a patient wants to speak, a person wants to speak, a councillor Shire. Did you want to speak well or should I let everybody else go first?
I'm willing to.
You're happy, yes?
I'm happy.
Okay. So I'm going to go to councillor White, then to the back, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wasn't going to speak, I was going to be congratulated, Mr Mayor, and so definitely there. I just got to say I've heard what's going on today, I've just got to say what's happened. Sherry, into my... I had one complaint since I started and then Mr Green wasn't and where I phoned up, it was, it was for the lady phoning back, she said, 'Thank you'. And when I explained the reasons were and one did she didn't come back to me, so she was very happy, is that the mileage we're saving and not doing now for the shared service is, I think it's 300,000 miles or something like that, saving on mileage, which is a good thing for that economy, also good for saving money for the residents on the road and also for our health, because why them council wagons and bus cars not going around the county? They're not using fuel, they're exhausted, so when you explain to people why we've done it and what's happened, they appreciate the inputs, but they're quite pleased that we are doing what we're doing.
Thank you so much, councillor White. We have good councillor patients.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, we're pretty close to our residents in Romsey, we talked about my deal, and I've got to say over the last six weeks when we've spoken to the majority of residents in Romsey that we've not heard anything at all about the bag collection of bins. We had a change of date, so there wasn't major disruption, and yet there was no problems with that. And I'm really sad that the Lids, the fact that we're so much rubbish.
Thank you so much. Councillor Anderson, would you like to speak?
Yes, very briefly. I can't so more started by being very clear, but this was a big change and at no point did I play that play, but there were no issues. As far as I can hear, nobody has said that the changeover was perfect. Quite a lot of my dead job, if you like, is managing change, and I'm very well aware that with the best planning in the world, there will always still be issues and there will always still be things that we can learn that we need to apply. This motion is not about those issues, this motion is about how we review those issues. So without, I support that the appropriate mechanism is the structure we have in place. Without trying to sound sarcastic, as a former history teacher, I would encourage people to answer the question that is set.
Thank you so much. Councillor Smith, we have to councillor Shire, please.
Congratulations, Mr Mayor. It's just a footnote to, what a footnote to more, I'll put Jones as raised, it's on the subject of responsiveness, which has been raised by the opposition. We went back to Cockle Row to make sure that the residents that flagged the issues were satisfied that we're taking appropriate action, having spoken with the executive councillor, then related to the officers. I spoke to one of the two people who said that she was entirely satisfied, and unfortunately the other resident left and I gave my phone number encouraging them to contact us if there were any problems. And the only other conversation that I had about the collection, I go and speak to the north of Cambridge, especially Castle and Albury, and this is going out canvassing three times a week for over a five-month period, was when someone unprompted, don't know what party they support, praised the level of information that had been given about the changes to collection times and dates. Thank you.
Thank you so much, councillor Shire. Adrian, is your turn? We have, we have councillor Hart here.
Mr Mayor, thank you. So as many people have said, changing an important service to this authority is a major task, needs to be planned well, needs to be thought through, needs to go to a time of the year when there is consistency in the service, not when we have a number of public holidays coming through, which in itself changes the service without any material restructuring. And I have to say, Mr Mayor, we are debating the way in which we review this fundamental change to the way that we are providing a critical service to our residents, but actually, more importantly, this is the only opportunity we've had so far to debate why it has happened and how it has happened. And I have to say, there are fundamental flaws, fundamental flaws, in the way that this was put in place for the implementation. I'm not going to go into the whole litany of why it happened and the experiences, but those experiences of residents are not just unique to us. I just raised, for example, a resident, I looked at the Cambridge News article, a resident in Mill Road, maybe Romsey, maybe Petersfield, complaining, in a number of weeks their bins have not been collected. In Newton, same issue, Croftgate. I worked with residents in Croftgate and Jane Hunt directly, she was not able to collect bins for over six weeks. A formal complaint was made, the chief executive is dealing with it. That's an illustration of residents, if you don't want to listen to the residents, that's fine, but on a fundamental service such as refuse collection, it impacts the council overall and your credibility as a ruling group. Now, it's interesting, Mr Mayor, in civic affairs, when we talked about the internal audit program for the year, I raised the issue in anticipation of some problems, but not the problems of this scale and nature, that there should be an internal audit of the service change over the calendar year. Interestingly, initially, the internal audit team said that we could not see that audit because South Cam's were leading on the service. Now, after a bit of confusion, and I think the chair of the committee, who's unfortunately left, questioned, approached this, the decision was taken, yes, we could see an internal audit review of the service. So I hope the ruling group will honor that obligation, that there is an internal audit review in addition to what it appears will be an environmental scrutiny review rather than a separate members' review, because it does go to the heart of why we are here as a council delivering for residents. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andrew. We have councillor Sinat, I think, to speak.
Thank you, sir. Just very briefly, as a Peterston councillor, I have no complaints of my attention, and I haven't heard my colleagues report any either. As a Peterston resident myself, I can say that the first week, there was, the moon green bin being taken on the same day, there was a two-day gap between. It was a no consequence whatsoever. Since then, it's perfect, so good in fact that I notice no difference. It's as good as it was and as I understand it will cost less.
And we would rate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I know it's a positive that the Lids people like, like subsidies, but I suggest that I take them for council meetings. Firstly, what's the council's draw? I completely agree. I have never paid for that and I think councillor Moore, executive councillor Moore, who I think gave a valuable speech and made a great political call, said words and said in fact as did councillor Smith, there was clearly initiative, we're not denying that, but that was a very fair criticism and I accept that.
criticism, and I accept that, we didn't have any assistance whatsoever. Now, where I disagree with you is in a number of other areas. Firstly, I don't appreciate, and I'm sure many councillors don't appreciate this, we've heard rumours on the break time, we've, I mean, it's not ridiculous, I've run the service while I've been there, I've heard everything about bins. For example, many of you, many of you, many of you, Mr Mayor, people, many of you are standing here now, saying, "We weren't briefed, we didn't, you didn't turn up, cancel it." You should look, because you did say that. Now, I believe highly, I, no, 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 actually, so, but I believe highly. Now, many of you have serious concerns of different things and all the rest, this is kind of like being wise after the event, and the worst is, success has a thousand fathers and a defeat is an orphan, and it's very much the case, it's a boundless chase, we have bin truck chasing. Now, in terms of the service itself, of course, we've put an extra resource, that's the point. Now, it's delusional, it's truly delusional, to say that drivers and staff were not consulted, and they didn't see the maps, and we went through in such incredible detail, the big difference was change in your change using, which resulted in a similar problems. Our was bigger, one of the big changes, we've been more open. We've simply told people, we put it on the website, where roads have been missed, where houses have been missed, we've been far, far, far more open than I was in opposition, and you missed an awful lot of bins in April for that election, which were very quiet, very, very quiet. And I found out, I'm actually detective councillor, now, I've never done that, I've always been very open, and I won't take lectures from councillor ever. You know, there are many houses, see, I've bought a time pool, but I'm not talking to people who don't shop, and I'm also, when it comes also to, if you want to scrutinise someone, if you want to find out what issues are, and you're as wise as you claim to be, then surely, when environment came up, and we said, "Is there any business, do you have any business?", you said, "No." When full council came up in April at a height of this, you said, "No." So now, this wise after the event, we, you know, we saw this could happen, we said, "No, no, no." Now, a number of things. In terms of transparency, right in place, that my predecessor, who set aside, set aside the paperwork for the shareway service, it was me who added the level of transparency, you forgot to put it in, you assigned the document to liken it, that gave away the shareways, that never reported back to this council, was ludicrous. You also, in terms of a whole range of other things, we have right now a service which in the last few weeks, in terms of these bins, has been a fleet breakdown. We've ordered the fleet, the fleet are coming, where we have these bins, we've always tried to miss things, you've got the green, because you know, the green is the one string, if we do miss anything, the people don't feel, it's the black, the people really, really feel, it's the blue, overflow and salt. We're at a level at ninety-nine point six, ninety-nine point five, the best we usually get, so it's ninety-nine point eight. Now, I know more point two means a lot to a lot of people, yeah, but what I would say is that despite a massive change, and we're not finished yet, I appreciate that, there's still, there's still some way to go, we have achieved an awful lot, and can I say, because I probably not have an option to give, the staff have worked incredibly hard, we have asked an awful lot, not just for the balance, but for the balance of all, I've been messaging officers on Honeymoon, I've been calling one of them every single day to find out what's going on, they have gone above and beyond to deal with all the issues. Now, amongst other things that have been said during this, you really need to look at Dr Walton Per. I, when people come to the council and ask for, for example, the other day with councillor Smith, in terms of the situation with hoses, which we all agree is probably, was a very serious issue, the council can't be political in an election, and we've had an extended election period. Councillor, councillor, councillor Price, obviously with a medal, or Perford, from memory, we've had the election, we now move to a general election, that by all means has been slightly increased. So, in terms of, by the way, if you really need to understand finance, if you want to be councillor, we don't spend one thousand, we don't spend one thousand five hundred pounds on the bin service anyway. The bin, cost to household is counted in the tens, yeah? So when people come and say, "I want value of service," they bloody get value of service for waste collection, because it's one of the, it's the number one thing that they value on council. Now, we have done, I think, an awful lot, we've learned from the mistakes of previous bin changers, and I would say that by all means, bring it to advantage, I'll turn up, I'll take any question you want, I can talk about bins all night.
Thank you so much. Is there any more debates? We have Castle More, executive councillor, actually, the right, replied to the minutes, if you wish, and also Castle Colla, has replied to the minutes. I would now vote for the amendment.
What was it, Mr Mayor, please, councillor, not a problem? Okay, and then we go back to you, please. Thank you, Mr Mayor, I know it's some disappointment that the executive councillor has refused to apologise, and said, "No, no, no."
Because, what, essentially, speaking slowly, I have apologised, I always apologise, I've never, ever, nor before.
You sit down.
She was very good.
Has that been, this is a product, I just give you a camera game because we interrupted, so we're saying, "Oh, my God."
Thank you. I noticed that the new executive councillor, her part, has refused to apologise, and also the statements confirmed, and we will not see further deductions in the service. I'm shocked by some of the statements by members of the group opposite, who ignore any complaints or increase quota, which is documented in the briefing we've been in this annual plan, trying to claim that everything's okay, the view is clearly, "I'm all right, Jack, so it must be absolutely fine, citywide." I'm now starting to learn, which councillor from the group opposite, former Labour councillor, and for a short period, PBC, Sue Burton, was referring to, where she said, "If you don't care about staff in the city." Some of the claims made by Peter Roberts, councillor Roberts, were false, claims that the bins are equally broken, if you put them away tonight, no they're not, several residents have been up and said, "Hang on, do you remember, do you remember this?" So there's still not appearing on there. The rules on the pre-election period, doesn't, for some strange reason, stop labour, putting out past best releases, just gives you an excuse for time.
My honour, this is replying to the debate, not introducing new matter.
I'm referring to matters of the council.
You have to write, you have to write, yes, please, I said, okay.
I'm referring to point three, I'm not, I'm not going to debate. I know that councillor Sinott said that bins in her walk were delayed by two days, it was quite not long in comparison walk.
Single machine.
Are you sure the bins are in the picture, Mr Mayor? Nevertheless, clearly the group opposite do not wish to be held accountable for the failures in the bin service, as regards which, there is no way that the sports amendment, you clearly just wish, and I'd like to white wash.
Thank you so much. We are now voting for the amended motion, please, can I see those in favour?
Now, just a one-point border edge on the public record in private scrutiny, we as a group have a pledge that we want to remove green bins.
That's not a point two.
Can you put it, Chair? We are now voting on the amendment, okay, let's sit with the case, I would now go to vote on the amended motion, please, can I see those in favour?
The amendments.
Of the amendments. And those against. The amended motion is carried.
No, no, the amended motion is carried. We only go to the original motion, the amendment's last, the motion is in what, amended?
Do you have any questions?
Mr Mayor, my honour, my honour, I don't think that is the case, I thought the case was that we debated the amendments as part of the motion, then we voted on the amendment, and if the amendment was carried, it was then incorporated into the main measure, unless it was complete, unless it was complete, delete and replace, and I don't think that this amendment was complete, delete and replace, I may be wrong.
So then, please, go to the motion resubmitted.
Yeah, that's practice.
Thank you. So, can I see those in favour?
We believe, when we're voting on this, this is a delete or amendment, it's not, if I'm supposed to, it is a delete or amendment, we, you know, it's not a delete or, it's not a delete or.
It's not a delete or.
Now, we just need to go on to the motion resubmitted, so, can I take that?
No, excuse me. It's important, the amendment, it is a delete or amendment, if you, if you double this up, because it needs to be clear.
The law has told us that you say to have a vote on motion as amendment, so I can make that on that.
We support that, we support that.
So can we go to the vote, then, on the motion resubmitted, please, can I see those in favour? And those against. The motion is carried. So, thank you so much. To note, no written questions received, and to note the decision taken, which is on the agenda of twenty-sixty-one, sixty-two. Thank you for today, and the next scheduled meeting is on Thursday, the 10th of July, and I would like to pass this on first.